Supervisor.
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Supervisor Shutey? Supervisor White? Mayor Beckwell? We have a call. Okay, make sure they're green. We're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Three. We have the Mr. Ken Haskins from the First Christian Church. Will you please lead us in an indication? Thank you so much, Ken. That was very nice. Would you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And thank you again, Ken.
We could use some.
Okay. We're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is our opening public comment. Is there any? Mr. White, you asked for public comment time?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Carson City, Madam Mayor, Supervisors, and Staff. I just want to say that, you know, I feel very privileged to be among the first board to use this new Robert Bob Crowell Boardroom. I hope everybody that uses this room will reflect on the public decorum lessons that we all learned from Mayor Bob. And I'm looking forward to this board of supervisors continuing Bob's custom and legacy of open and inclusive meetings, using all available opportunity for residents to contribute to our government. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Yeah. I just, I, oh, yeah.
You didn't tell me. That's all right.
Here, let me.
We have new technology, so, yeah.
Let me raise my hand.
Supervisor Giomi?
I just, you know, I think if Bob were here, and I think he is here, in spirit, I think he would hate this. And not because he hates the room, but because he wouldn't want to call attention to himself. And I guess I would say buck up, Bob. We, it's too bad. You have done so much for this community, and we owe this room to you. And he's just going to have to get over it. So that was it.
I certainly like that. I think I'm just going to add this one's for you, Bob. Right? Let's make this day for him. So, let's go on. Desi, do we have any public comment?
It looks like we have one caller, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we'll take the caller first, please.
Good morning. Ms. Mayor, hello?
Good morning.
Okay. Good morning, Ms. Mayor and Supervisors. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, my name is Michael Tancheck. I live at 740 Clearview in South Carson. I just want to start by saying I love hearing about Mayor Crowell. Bob is a mentor to me, and I really like hearing all the good stuff that you have to say about him. I have a few issues that I want to raise in public comments. First one, well, first of all, in your late filed documents, you got a bunch of letters from folks down here in South Carson that have to do with the Board of Crossing Project.
Yes, we did.
And, yes. And I think what happened is that, and this goes to the second issue that I want to bring up, I'll bring it up now. It has to do with the public noticing process in general that's being used. Those letters actually should have gone to the Planning Commission rather than you folks. And I'll be curious to see whether they show up in the Planning Commission's packet that's supposed to come out today. Tuesday was the deadline for comments to go into the packet. The notices started showing up Sunday. So you basically had a three-day holiday and then eight hours, you know, for the folks down here to respond to that. A few of us have been working on this for quite a while. We've sort of, we've been following it since last June. And I think Mayor and Supervisor Giomi remember that whole episode. I think what I would say is I would like to see at some point in time the noticing requirements perhaps revisited and amended as much as possible. For example, there could be a notice of application. The application for this thing was received in October. And yet, three days before the comments are due is when people get notified. I mean, I'd like, you know, it should be a notice of application. And then the 10 days, you know, not more than 10 days prior, you should get a notice of the hearing. So that basically had two, kind of a two-step process. And also, I would say in the low-density areas, like we are down here in South Carson, over on Deer Run, in the north part of town, when you're on a, when you're on a single-family, one-acre, 600 feet doesn't go very far. And so only a very limited number of people get noticed, even though what's going on in that part of the community would affect a lot, a lot more people. So, you know, that was, but I have, that was my thing on that. Also, you know, one of the things that we keep stumbling upon in this issue is the master plan. And, you know, you guys are going to be hearing a lot about Board in the future, trust me on this one. But 26B on the Agenda is the annual report for the master plan. I know it's a little late to be jumping in on that, so I'm just throwing a comment out here. You know, one of the lines in the master plan says, "Confirm the community's vision for the future. Most communities revisit and update their comprehensive plan every five to seven years to ensure that it continues to meet the community's vision and goals for the future." That's, you know, a master plan is really is a living document, and you need to visit it over and over and over again to keep yourself on course. Well, this master plan was done in 2006. That's 15 years ago. And, you know, I think it's hopelessly outdated. And I'd like, I'd like the Supervisors to consider reopening the master plan to bring, update the thing, take into consideration all the development and what's left that's gone into Carson City over the past 15 years, and, you know, see what needs to be changed there. Oh, and I have, I have one third item that's a little, you know, a little off. I think, does Carson City have, this is a question first. Does Carson City have jurisdiction over that South Carson Street? Or does NDOT still have that?
Depends on where the particular demarcation line is. So we're to a point.
Right. Yeah, I'm talking about the area, like down here by the shopping center, you know, Rayleigh's and Coles and that. Just kind of a note, when you make, they've got great new left-turn lanes to get into the shopping center. Problem is, it's really hard to see where the driveways are when you're making a left turn. And, you know, I'm kind of worried that somebody's going to end up on a curb or something there because they missed the driveway. So if, you know, the folks that are working on that, if there's some way that they can better demarcate where those driveways are, I think that would help a lot of people. And those are the end of my comments, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tancheck. We really appreciate your comments.
We have one more caller, Madam Mayor.
We have another caller?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take the caller.
Caller, it is your turn for public comment. Please state your name for the record. That is all for public comment, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Desi. I appreciate that. So I'll take any public comment here. LeAnn, did you want to say? Either that one or this one. Either one.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's LeAnn Keever, and I am Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission in Carson. And I want to say that it is an honor to be here today as we dedicate this room to Mayor Bob. He was a man of extraordinary vision, strength of character, and ethics. So in that light, it's also appropriate that we dedicate this, rededicate to the public our own ethics and open government to the citizens. So just thank you for allowing me to be here this morning. That's it.
Thank you for all you do for us and your volunteering on Parks and Rec. You do a great job. Served with you for six years and just, you've done a great job. Thank you. Okay, do we have any further public comment? I will then, just for the record, I received some public comments. So Mr. Whitefield, I just want to do this because he and his wife got their first dose of the Pfizer vaccine. And he needed to tell me that the people working the lines were fantastic. "I don't know who put this together for Carson City, but it seemed to us to work beautifully. Everyone was friendly and helpful, and it seemed very well organized. We want to thank every one of the workers who helped us. PFC Edwards gave me my shot, and I didn't even feel it." And the rest is just a personal thing. But anyway, I just wanted to put that out there, that the shot lines, vaccine lines are going well. And then Mr. Rick Haney, this one I just want to put out on the record, and I'll just paraphrase it because it was nice to see someone that does not live here that sent in a record to me to do a shout-out for John Costello, who does our, is our park ranger out at the gun range, and just how helpful he was and went above and beyond and the excellent service that he received. So I just actually wanted John Costello to get a public shout-out. So thank you for that. And then the rest, we'll have one that comes in on an item itself. So anyone else? No? Don't see any hands raised. Oh, Mr. Yu. Get that touch. There you go.
Okay, there we go. All right. Thank you, Mayor. So I normally don't like to chime in a whole lot during public comment. But really, for the benefit of the public today, I wanted to address one of the comments that we received from the caller earlier, which was with respect to some of the late materials that were published with the Agenda. And those were the written comments that were submitted with respect to this development. And what I wanted to draw attention to is that the Agenda that's published for this board, you know, is very specific with respect to the inclusion, you know, for minutes purposes and also on the record, anything that's submitted by 3:00 PM the day before the meeting. So with respect to public comment, you know, because we're, you know, sort of in this restrictive mode of conducting our meetings, and it's, we don't have a physical location to members of the public right now. We're receiving written materials. We do have that cut off at 3:00. The public comment that we received before the actual meeting is, even though it may be designated as late material for submission purposes, it's really actually an advance comment because the meeting hasn't occurred yet. So I just, I wanted to address that in the sense that, you know, these are not late materials. It's completely compliant with anything that's required by the open meeting law. It's also compliant and in alignment with the process and procedure that this board has adopted and put in place, which is also clearly articulated on the notice of Agenda as well. And then the second thing I just wanted to address real quickly so that there's no confusion, again, for the benefit of the public, I think the caller had commented that the written comments were really supposed to have gone to the Planning Commission. The conversation that I had with the Planning Department yesterday was that the submitters of those comments had actually wanted it to be submitted both to this board as well as the Planning Commission. The question was whether that was possible. My answer was absolutely. It's public comment. It falls within the jurisdiction of both public bodies. And there's nothing in the law that says you cannot duplicate or be redundant with your written comments or your verbal comments. So it's not that that was erroneously transmitted to this public body, but in fact, my understanding is that that same material will be transmitted not only to this body, as we've already received it, but also to the Planning Commission. So again, just for the, for the public's benefit, I wanted to clarify that on the record. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yu. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is approval of the minutes of December 17, 2020. We have one correction to Box 16C on a voting. It changes to members. Is everyone else any other corrections or changes? And if someone will raise their hand, they can make a motion. Miss Supervisor Giomi?
I move to approve the minutes as corrected.
Is there a second? Ms. Shutey? "I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of December 17 as corrected in the voting box. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? The motion carried unanimously." Didn't let us vote. Did not let us vote, just... Yeah, didn't let us vote. Oh, wait, never mind. Try that. Everybody? Mr. Jones? Did you want to vote? Great. Thank you very much. We have a unanimous vote. Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. We will be moving Item 11A from Consent for Discussion. Do any of the other board members want anything pulled? If not, if someone raises their hand, they may make the motion then for the consent agenda, with the exception of Item Number 11.
Items 7A, 8A, 9A, and 10A.
Supervisor White, would you like to make the second? "I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda consisting of Items 7A, 8A, 9A, and 10A. All those in favor, please say aye and vote." Okay, the vote is unanimous. Thank you. We will then take up Item 11A as that was what was pulled from the consent agenda. And I believe the Treasurer is here to discuss it. Thank you.
Hi, Gail Robertson, Carson City Treasurer. So this is a new item coming to you. It's been in the statute for a long time. I don't know why my predecessor wasn't doing this report. I'm not privy to the history of what happened there. But anyway, NRS 354280 requires me to give a monthly report to you summarizing the receipts and dispersments from and all the balances and the funds on a monthly basis. So that is what I presented to you here. I thought maybe with the transition in the board, now was a good time to catch up.
Does anyone have any questions, Treasurer? No? All right, then I will accept a motion.
I am. The report is presented. Thank you, Gail.
Do I have a second? Supervisor White, thank you. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Gail. Okay, we're going to move on to Item Number... Oh, I'm having fun with this push button. Item Number 13A, which is a discussion regarding federal legislation by the Porter Group. That is our contract in Washington, DC, I believe. Are they on the line?
We are.
Yes, hello. Good morning.
So we have Gen, do we have General Herbert and Cameron?
You do, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
I'll let you guys decide who's going first. So take it away.
Okay, I'll start it off, Mayor. It's great to see you again. And I would like to let the board know that we appreciate the time that you're giving us today. Just wanted to kind of keep you up. You may recall, last year, we gave you a briefing. And so working with the Mayor Nancy and Stephanie and just kind of, we'd like to try and keep this on track for an annual catch-up on what we're doing and, you know, in the support of our great, you know, Carson City. I also feel very privileged to be here today, as you are calling it Bob Crowell Day. Mayor Crowell, good friend for many, many years. As you all know, I served 43 years in the military. And Bob and I were very close from the military connection too, let alone just being good friends. I'd like to also express that I think yesterday was a great day for this country. You know, the peaceful transition of power did occur. And I just wanted to thank, you know, the FBI and all the law enforcement. But more importantly and closely to me is, of course, the National Guard. You know, I served in the Nevada Guard, total 43, but 36 years of it with the Nevada Guard. And I'm not sure if you're aware of it, but we had 270 soldiers in the capital city helping defend it. And then we also had 50 on standby right there at the armory in Carson City. So I just wanted to say how proud I am of the Nevada Guard and upholding our democracy in this country. So with that, I guess, you know, I'll turn this over to my Legislative Specialist Cameron, and he'll go through what we've been doing for the city, what we see in the future. Obviously, it's a moving target right now with the new administration. A lot of new agenda items are coming out from the administration. We're diligently trying to keep up, and we'll be relaying all of that to Nancy and Stephanie as it unfolds over the course of the next, you know, several weeks. So with that, I'll turn it over to Cameron.
Hi, hello, Supervisors and Madam Mayor. Good morning, and thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to you a little bit today about what we're seeing in the federal government right now and how we'd like to position the city to help take advantage of some of the Biden administration's most positive policy proposals relating to things like climate change, but also further COVID stimulus. I'll go ahead and start by bringing this back home. I'm sure many of us here saw Governor Sisolak's State of the State address a few days ago. I do remember that among the many priorities the governor is faced with, he did mention that getting, excuse me, getting federal dollars into Nevada would be a primary concern of his administration moving forward as Nevada, just like the rest of the country, grapples with COVID-19. An excellent way to do that, especially on behalf of the city, is the appropriations process. Carson City has, in the past, participated in this process in order to help fund grants in such that might be of benefit to the city as it moves on infrastructure projects and the like. However, this year's appropriations process is going to be likely quite different. With yesterday's inauguration, basically Senate Democrats now have effective control of the chamber for the first time this year. This is going to mark a two-year period of a slim Democratic majority. This is likely an indicator that the congressional appropriation tool known as earmarks is all but certain to make a comeback. Majority Leader Hoyer has said that he's on board in the House. New Senate Majority Leader Schumer has not come down against them yet. It is, he has lots of members in his conference that are for it. I think it is, it is something that the city can count on as being available moving forward, highly likely, especially as many members have cited these provisions as being very positive tools to fight coronavirus by allocating money to congressional districts, cities, and other entities that need it the most. It's also a very effective measure at actually keeping costs down. It might not seem so intuitive, but by having funding broken down by a list of destinations of where it's headed, it actually helps members manage their budgets a lot easier because it gives you a much more tactile and user-friendly interface by which to understand where all of the federal government's spending is going. So it actually reduces or has the tendency and potential to reduce federal spending. I think that's going to be very attractive to lawmakers, especially at a time like this. I'd like to point out really quickly that you won't be looking for any kind of a vote or anything on whether or not to bring earmarks back, just for anyone who isn't aware. Earmarks are currently quote-unquote banned in both Houses of Congress. But bringing them back would simply only mean a change in the opinions of the controlling party in both houses, which is now the Democrats, who are very openly supportive of earmarks. So it wouldn't be a long administrative process at all. And we're expecting action on that very soon as House Majority Leader Hoyer did solicit earmark priorities from his members earlier in the month as part of his preparation for the Biden administration's inauguration. Moving on, the city's requests in the past relating to federal dollars coming into the state have been things like the Quill Water Treatment Plant or the Arthur Street Sewer Hookup Project, Emergency Operations Center Development, and other items. Stephanie and Nancy have been doing an excellent job on our weekly and now bi-weekly, heading back to weekly, regular legislative calls where we get a sense of the city's immediate needs concerning infrastructure investments. Of course, we take our marching orders from you, Mayor, and then the Board of Supervisors. But these are just some of the things we're looking for as we anticipate getting more information on the earmark and general appropriations conversation in certainly the coming days as Congress wakes back up. We're expecting most congressional work to begin the first week of February. So we are in the very ending days of the sleepy winter period for Congress. Appropriations, as many of you know, is an all-year process at the federal level. It, submissions will likely be occurring in early March with follow-up meetings happening in summer and fall of this year. And then with final, kind of wrapping up the process, ideally in fall and winter of 2021. Obviously, this winter showed us how precarious and difficult passing budget bills can be, especially as they become quote-unquote Christmas trees moving through Congress and having all sorts of resolutions attached to them. But moving on quickly to the Biden administration, so moving on from Congress to the administration's priorities as a whole, I think one thing the city should be very excited about that we at Porter Group here are is the fact that leading the Department of Transportation is the former mayor, Pete Buttigieg. Or, excuse me, going through the nomination process. He is having his confirmation hearing today. It is likely expected for him to be voted in not too long after. I will have a summary available for the city to look at in addition to Alexander Mayorkas, the Biden administration's Department of Homeland Security nominee, available for reading as soon as his hearing transcript is available. Right now, I was able to catch a few comments, and I know that making public transportation and such COVID-proof is essentially kind of his immediate goals, unsurprisingly. But infrastructure needs, as they relate to cities, I think are for perhaps maybe the first time going to be very, very forefront in DOT's mind, which is only ever, I think, going to benefit the city. We look forward to briefing Stephanie and Nancy and, left-handedly, the board and mayor on how we would like the city to be able to take advantage of some of the opportunities we think are going to come out of a newly narrowly-focused Biden Transportation Department. So we're very excited about that, and that's happening today. Like the General said, things go very fast in DC. And there's going to be, from here on out, a flurry of news that we look forward to updating you on. But that's just one development happening that we think relates heavily to the city's priorities happening today that we look forward to briefing you on later. Moving on to executive orders. Very quickly, I would like to touch on these as they are timely. timely. President Biden did sign in fifteen executive orders yesterday, and while many concern things that don't directly impact the city, we'd like to point out that the federal mask mandate on any federal property, and also the Biden administration's plan to require masks on things like public transportation, is something that could stand to at least marginally impact the city, and so that's something I want to bring to everyone's attention on this call. We'll have more information coming out about those later in the day, as our team is able to dig into all fifteen of the ones he signed yesterday, and the ten he decides to sign or will likely sign today, and brief the city on that as well in the coming hours. So again, much is happening in the city that we are happy to, or, excuse me, in DC that we are happy to brief the city on. I think that means good opportunity. Finally, moving on to just general congressional happenings, I know COVID stimulus is going to be everybody's next question to members of Congress. Right now, we don't have super-large top-line numbers coming out of the Senator-House GOP conference. We do have the White House handing out a $1.9 trillion plan, the Biden administration's Save America, American Rescue Plan. Three-hundred-and-fifty billion dollars in that proposed legislation is slated for state and local governments, to be distributed, much as it has been in the past two iterations of aid that we've seen coming from Congress. Right now, besides the House Democrats' Heroes Act, which passed the chamber in May of last year, we don't have any other real, right now, top-line discussions happening on COVID stimulus. The Biden White House is likely going to want to spend next week getting settled before it starts making those overtures for what is going to need to be a very quick conversation as we are now two months out from the expiration date from most of the last bill's deadline expenditures for things like PPP and other items. So just some very timely legislation to watch for. Of course, our advocacy in that area is always focused on taking the burden of expense off the city as much as possible, and making, disseminating information about small business relief to the Carson City community and other individual-level aid that we know is going to be forefront to many Americans' minds, as it is unfortunately very necessary as the virus continues to, continues to kind of ravage our country. I know that we are surpassing record numbers of cases in many states, and so as this occurs, our priorities for the city in this area are always going to be funding to take the burden of National Guard checkpoints and other items off the city, using federal dollars coming into Nevada. And so that's going to be part of the Biden administration's American Rescue Plan. Surface transportation comes back again, not just in the form of earmarks, but also in the form of surface transportation reauthorization legislation that is likely to be signed by Congress sometime in the early fall, as the transportation programs that fund things like highway development are set to expire at basically the end of this federal, excuse me, government fiscal year. So that's another opportunity for the city to look at grants and other such items of interest that would help it act on some of its infrastructure priorities, as the Biden administration and Democrats at large in Congress do favor significant infrastructure investment at a time when unemployment is high, as they see it as a job creator. So we can expect huge developments in this area, especially if H.R. Two, the last legislation to pass out of the House in the summer pertaining to service transportation, is anything to go off of, as it was a quite sweeping bill that had millions upon billions of dollars of programs added to it as the COVID crisis got worse over the spring. We'll also be providing the city with information relating to the Paycheck Protection Program and other federal aid programs, as they are invented, altered, or sunsetted in legislative discussions surrounding further stimulus. We've been happy to do so in the past, and we consider it a huge priority, as we know that keeping an information, an open information for the constituents is a primary concern of any elected official, and we are happy to assist the board and the city in making sure that your constituents have up-to-date, timely information about all federal aid programs that might be available to them in the coming months and basically year, as we continue to grapple with coronavirus. I want to go ahead and give General Herbert a moment to chime in and make sure that I didn't miss anything, but as Stephanie and Nancy know, we're available for questions anytime. I hope you guys found, excuse me, board members found that informative and exciting. There's lots of opportunity in the air in Washington, and I look forward to telling you more about it in the coming weeks and days. General, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Cameron. I think Cameron pretty much covered it all. I guess I would, Mayor, open it up to any questions from you or any of the board members that we can maybe help explain further.
Do you have any questions from the board?
I don't see any questions from the board. Can I, maybe just a general comment? I heard Mr. Gresh indicate he would be letting us know about the paycheck protection programs and things, so as soon as you know anything that, like you indicated, helps our constituents, if you can pass that on to us, it would just be wonderful, so that the board could communicate with the community. Many are still suffering, and our small businesses could use some help, so thank you very much with that.
Oh, Mr. Jones, do you have a question? Microphone.
Just having us.
I'm sorry. General, this is Stan Jones. I remember you from many years ago in the Guard, and I just want to comment that you ought to be proud. Our Guard people are doing a wonderful job here in Nevada this year. Good to see you again.
Good to see you again, too.
Okay. Well, with that, thank you.
So, Mayor, just real quick, yeah, that is something since the pandemic hit, that we, you know, obviously, you hired us to take care of the city, and we've been doing that, but we have done an extension now to where we're working through Nancy and, of course, Stephanie, to try and pass along all this vital information that's coming out of the federal government, like PPP, to help all these small businesses up and down the, you know, Carson Street. And I would also say, if you may recall, we, and will continue to do this, we had a conference call with the Small Business Administrator, and we did invite the chamber into that to be able to participate. So any opportunities we find that we can help you all economically, outside even, you know, the restraints of the government, we're doing what we can to make sure Carson City survives this horrible pandemic.
Thank you again very much for your presentation today, and so you're going to do this annually? You never know, you might have great news and need to come on sooner, so don't be afraid to reach out if you have some wonderful news for the community. Thank you again.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Happy to do that.
Hi, Cameron. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Thirteen B. This is for possible action and discussion regarding the appointment of three members to the Carson City Open Space Advisory Committee, each for a term that expires in January of Ms. Shude, do you have a disclosure?
Yes, I do, thank you. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. This agenda item is for the appointment of members to the Open Space Advisory Committee. One of the applicants for appointment, Susan Martinovich, is my sister. As a result of this familial status, I have a commitment in a private capacity to her. Because the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would be materially affected by this relationship, I have a disqualifying conflict and will be, will not be voting on this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Shude. Mr. Yu, did you want to kind of go over this appointment process? Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. The thing that I really primarily wanted to address on this matter is the submission of the late material. And some of the board members may have noticed, the late material that came in and was posted yesterday is the application materials from Mr. Jeremy Hall. I wanted to address this and just, again, clarify for the benefit of the record, that the application materials from Mr. Hall were actually submitted on time as part of the application process. However, they were excluded from publication, you know, after a consultation with Mr. Hall, between him and staff, based on an application of, an interpretation of our BCC's manuals, Paul, or, I'm sorry, our conflicts provision. That's in our BCC's Policies and Procedures Manual, and this is the conflicts provision that was brought forward to this board in July of 2019, which speaks to certain circumstances where an applicant for appointment to a BCC of the city is involved in some sort of a contract with the city where there perhaps may be a disqualifying conflict. I guess I will say in general that in reviewing the information that was submitted, and also in discussions with various staff members of different departments in the city, I had made the decision that at least, you know, it passed the initial vetting process where it could be brought to this board for further consideration for appointment purposes. I leave it ultimately to this board with respect to how to properly apply and interpret that provision, that conflicts provision. I think it's reasonable to be able to interpret that provision a couple of different ways, and so I'll turn this back to the mayor for further discussion, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions with regard to that language in the BCC's Policies and Procedures Manual.
Thank you, Mr. Yu. Does a member of the board want a specific question on that, or should we just go ahead and do the, we'll get started with the interviews? Thank you very much. So I believe, Ms. Paulson, we're going to take Mr. Erickson first, because is he the only one on the line?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Erickson, I can see you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Good morning, Ms. Mayor.
Good morning. So what we, have you ever, I don't, I don't recall seeing you. Are you familiar with our process?
I am not familiar, no.
Okay, so what we're going to do is, well, in this case, only four of us are going to ask you a question or questions, and we'll ask those same ones of all the other candidates. And then at the end, after everyone has been interviewed, we will select the appointments. So the first thing, okay, I'd like to start with is, tell me what contributions you think you can make to this Open Space Committee? Why are you asking us to appoint you, and then what can you contribute?
I've been a resident of Carson City for almost twenty years, and during that time, I've had the opportunity to travel around the city and outside, taking advantage of the open space areas. I consider that a very important part of my life, and I know it's a very important part for the lives of many of my Carson City resident neighbors. So the reason I'm asking for appointment is to ensure that this opportunity exists for our current residents and for our future residents as well.
Okay, thank you so much. Supervisor Giomi?
Thank you. And Todd, thank you for submitting your application, much appreciated. You got kind of a long question, so stay with me. So, current Carson City ordinance allows a developer to build a residential common open space development that provides for the reduction in lot sizes below the minimum required by zoning, in exchange for providing open space and recreational space. I'd like to know how you feel about this ordinance. Do you think we should allow this exchange in lot size for added open space, or should we change the law and require lot sizes to meet the minimum zoning requirements? And I'd like to explain your answer, please.
Thank you for the question. I guess it would have to do with the quality of the open space being traded for the decreased size in the residential lots. You know, I guess, it's difficult to say with that question whether it would be, I think you have to go with a case-by-case scenario, and truly look at the benefits versus the new open space versus the potential negative effects of having housing closer together. So I think it's difficult to really say without looking at the facts of each case.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor White?
Thank you. Morning, Todd. Thank you for being willing to serve this community. So describe the effort you will take to provide access for all user groups in our community.
The city has done a really, really fine job of increasing access availability to our community. Since, I've really noticed that over the past probably five to seven years, where trailheads have been improved, trailheads have been created for access to our open space areas. So part of my, part of my ambition would be to continue that access and to work with the city officials and the city open space managers to continue to provide that opportunity to our residents.
Thank you.
Supervisor Jones?
Thank you again for applying. My question is, Open Space has done a wonderful job as far as trails. Do you see any other programs or expansions that could be added to make it more enhanceable?
Well, in full disclosure, I'm a member of Muscle Powered, and I have worked on many, many trail projects with them. So I think that the partnership between private organizations, or, you know, like Muscle Powered, Carson Valley Trails Association, and the city is the way of the future, and it allows you to employ the use of volunteers to create that trail infrastructure. So, yeah, I think it's beneficial for the city to work with those organizations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson, again, for applying. So that's the end of your interview. You're welcome to stay on the line and listen to others and to our final decision, if you'd like. You're not required to, but I know we're exciting, so you might want to.
I have to go back to work, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you again. Are we ready for Ms. Iverson?
Yes.
You'll go get her? Thank you. The others are sequestered, Mr. Erickson, so that they could not hear your answers.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we try to, try to be fair to everybody. Hey, if you want to just state your name for the record, then we'll get started.
Donna Inverson.
Some feedback there. We have a technical guy here for our first day in this room, in case there's some issues to resolve. Yeah, we might need him forever. You heard that, Matt. So Donna, thank you so much for applying, for, to continue on the Open Space Committee. You've been through this before, so you're familiar with the process. So I'll go ahead and get started. Tell us why you're applying again, and then what benefit you think that you offer to the committee?
I'm applying again because...
Because we have better microphones.
Excuse me, somebody keeps trying to call me, and I can't get them to shut up. You don't hear it, but through my hearing aids, I do. Because I enjoy being on the Open Space Committee, and I really care a lot about open space here, and it's a passion of mine. And when I moved to Carson City, I was just so thrilled to find out about the whole program here, that I just really couldn't wait to be a part of it. So, and as far as being a benefit, I think I had a lot of knowledge about what's going on, and where we've come, been, and where we're going, and I think I can help carry us along the way for the rest of the way.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Giomi?
Sorry, trying to get these microphones figured out. Thank you again, Donna, and thank you for your past service. Carson City ordinance allows a developer to build a residential open space development that provides for the reduction in lot sizes, and actually below the required minimum in zoning. And in exchange for that, they would have to provide open space and recreational space. So I'd like to know how you feel about that ordinance? Do you think it's the right way to go? Do you think that allowing a reduction in lot sizes in exchange for that additional open space is something we should change, or should we keep it the way it is? So I'd like to hear your thoughts on that.
Actually, I agree with that. I think that... I think that, I don't believe in McMansions. Smaller homes, smaller lot sizes and getting more open space is a better use of our land. And if we can trade lots, you know, big lots for public space, I'm in favor of that.
Okay, thank you.
Getting paths and trails for the public, yeah, I'm in favor of that.
Supervisor White.
Morning, Donna.
Morning.
Thank you for being willing to continue on. So my question is, describe the effort that you will take to provide equitable access to all user groups.
Well, I think that the way that the ordinance is written and the Quality of Life Initiative was written does that for us. I mean, it's, it's open for all of us, for all public. We, it's open to everybody. It's, we don't close anybody out. I think some of the OHV people feel that maybe we lock them out, but, yeah, we do lock motorized use out, but you can get off your motorcycle and take a walk, which is really beneficial. You can motor up to the parking lot and you can get off and walk in. And then there's access to, we have helped to build the parking lot on Sierra Vista Lane to access the open motorized area east of Sierra Vista Lane. And I think Open Space has done a fantastic job of the motor, with the motorized area on the south end of Carson Hill.
Supervisor Jones.
Good morning, Donna. And thank you for all of your efforts and work on the open space. My question is, Open Space has done a wonderful job as far as the trails. Are there other amenities that you think they could do to enhance the open space property?
I think we could do more interpretation, more education, especially regarding wildlife and flora. Those are two things that I think we could improve upon. Part of the reason we haven't yet is we're so busy managing what we've got and we, you know, building the trails to get people into the area, but we do need to do more education. Leave no trace education and especially with what's been happening in the last year with COVID, we've seen such an uptick in usage and a lot of the people just don't know how to, you know, share the open space. And so I think more education and interpretation would be beneficial.
Thank you.
Donna, again, we want to thank you so much for applying and all of your good work for the community and your VNT project that you're working on. Didn't forget that. You're welcome to stay and listen to the rest of the interviews and then our final decision if you'd like or your choice. City manager, are we gonna bring in Jeremy? Mr. Hall? Thank you.
Good morning.
If you just want to state your name for the record and then we'll get started.
My name's Jeremy Hall.
Okay. Jeremy, we really want to thank you for applying for the position today. You've been through this process before, so I'll just get started. Why do you want to do the job? And then tell me what benefit you'll bring to the committee?
Why I want to do the job? I moved here in 2007. My wife and I have since built, built a family. We're homeowners. I'm an outdoor enthusiast. I wear a couple of hats at the, for my employer. I'm a GIS, the GIS administrator and I'm also the practice lead for our cultural resources team. That is, that is what I bring to the open space committee is my expertise, not only in Section 106 compliance with the various complex issues that the, that the open space staff have to deal with, with the State Historic Preservation Office, but when issues come up where they need assistance, technical assistance with GIS, I've always offered my, my help in that regard too. But really from a personal standpoint, I, I come from a small town. I come from Missoula, Montana and that place does not have an open space, a division of open space. And I saw, by the time that I had graduated college there, I saw the inundation of urban sprawl that can happen when your open spaces aren't protected. So I luckily won the lottery when I moved here for a job and discovered that we have a legitimate open space program. So when the opportunity presented itself for me to join, I jumped on it because the protection of our open spaces is the way that we ensure this place remains the small town that it is, that it's relatively secret and it's ours. And we want to control the, at least from my perspective, and I think I share this with the open space team, is that we want to, we want to protect what we have and to ensure that, you know, the recreational opportunities are there for everybody to enjoy and that we, we don't turn into a community where we just start seeing houses grow up the hillsides. So, I'm sorry, Ms. Bagwell, can you repeat the second question?
I, what benefit you were gonna bring to the committee?
Okay, I think I might have intertwined them. What I, I've got two, two areas of expertise that I can bring to the team to, to help with my, to help volunteer those, those pieces, to help city staff which have many challenges to help them do their jobs.
Thank you. Supervisor Giomi.
By the end of the day, we'll figure out how to work the microphones. Jeremy, thank you again and thanks for your past service. Carson City ordinance allows a developer to build a residential common open space development that provides for the reduction in lot sizes, in fact, below the minimum required in zoning. And in exchange for that, they have to provide open space and recreational space. So I'd like to know your thoughts on this ordinance, whether we should continue to allow this practice or do you think we should change the law and require development to meet the minimum zoning requirement?
Right, this is actually called out in the 2000 master plan, the 2000 open space master plan. I have mixed feelings about it because I'm, I live over next to the Anderson Ranch, which the developer, Vince Scott, I'm failing to, vintage, when that, that thing came about and we had, we had the restructuring of zoning. I had mixed feelings about it, but the, the benefit of downsizing a lot with a benefit of providing open space, we're not gonna have a reduction of people interested to come live here. So if we have to compromise and reduce lot sizes so that we can continue to meet the demands of our growing population and the benefit is to still provide open space with a goal of connectivity with our trails, to keep it so that this is a walkable, bikeable community, I have mixed feelings about it, but I guess I can say that I would be, I'd be okay with it.
Thank you. Supervisor White?
Can I ask, can I ask a follow-up?
You may.
Yeah, I just, Jeremy, in your application, you indicate that you have contracts with the city.
Yes, sir.
Are those contracts through you personally or through a business that you work for?
They're through my employer, NCE.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy, if you're being willing to carry on with this position. Describe for us the efforts that you will take to provide equitable access for all user groups.
In my time of being appointed in 2016, I have not missed a meeting. I believe that my participation, consistent participation and consistent voicing of, of my input will, will provide, you know, will provide a means for others involved that are in the, the public or in the, in the community to, to ask questions. And the more I am present, the more that I can speak up. My background is anthropology. I'm an archaeologist. And so the, the educational background that I've received and the, what I have, what I've experienced growing up is culture, other people. I completely, I completely agree with a tenet of equity and access for all. So for example, with our trails and I'm involved with, I tried to stay involved with our trails program and Greg Bergren was actually on the, the interview panel that ultimately hired him. I try to stay involved with, with those activities. One of the things that we've discussed is access to folks with disabilities. And so we've talked about how we can, how we can put a plan together, what, what types of trails we have available for adaptive riders, larger trail widths, lower grades, that type of thing. That's an example of how, how I've, I guess I've participated in the equity, equal access.
Thank you.
Supervisor Jones.
Good morning, Jeremy. I think everybody recognizes that our trails and our open space are none of the best. Do you have any suggestions or ideas how we could improve the amenities of our open space in addition to our trails?
Improve amenities, absolutely. I could, I could sit down with a beer and have this discussion all evening. I think we could improve our trail heads. I think that we could approve parking access. You know, as far as amenities, I think there's room for improvement for, for bathrooms, for signage, all of these things staff have been brick by brick steadily working, working on since my involvement with this committee. The, our trails program has exploded. The city has already gotten the ball rolling. We have an open space program which is very rare. We have a trails coordinator which is even more rare and we have a rock star trails coordinator. We have, we have a united plan, the UPMP, which provides our prioritization of, of trails across the community to continue to provide connectivity and linkage, again, so that we have, you know, the best walkable and bikeable community available. We're constantly keeping our, our ear to the ground on opportunities to expand our open spaces, although I know that that's, that's kind of a topic on its own because we have so, we have so much right now. It's really, we need to, we need to make sure that we can manage it. But when those opportunities present itself, and I was lucky to be involved in one of those purchases within the last couple of years, the Hamm property, which is now the Eagle, the Eagle View property, it's those opportunities that this whole team on open space is, is ultra-focused. So I don't really think, I don't think there's much to add. We already have, we already have the steps and the plan in place. It's just day by day, brick by brick, we're gonna slowly continually, continually improve it. So that's what I, yeah, that's what I have to say on the matter.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Hall, thank you so much for applying for the position and you've been through this again. You're welcome to stay and listen to other candidates that we interview and then our final decision or you can leave. It's your choice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much again. Nancy's already stepped out to get the next one. Good morning, Mark. How are you?
Okay.
If you would, you've been right here. And actually, he's left, the mic is green for you, so you're in good shape there. If you'd state your name for the record?
Mark Kimbrough.
Okay, Mark's been through interviews before.
A few.
Just a few. So then we'll just go ahead and get started since he's familiar with the process. So tell me why you're interested in open space and then what benefit you think you'll bring to the committee?
Why? Let's see, that's, that's kind of an easy one. Actually, I've loved open space since it started its program, but I worked for open space and made money from, thanks to Juan Guzman and Roger at the time. So I felt that if I was on open space and making money, that, I know they don't vote for the budgets, but I still thought that that, just a little shaky if you're gaining income from the program you're sitting on a board for. So I waited years and now I don't work for open space anymore, so I thought this was a chance because it doesn't open every couple of years or so to get an application. And so I loved RTC Board, but I decided to make a run at this one, this time, and I got dropped from RTC, which is okay because I wanted to make that risk to have this opportunity. So what I can bring is actually I wrote the open space plan. So, and that doesn't mean that that means that I have that feeling that I have some ownership to it, but don't, but I have vast amount of experience in Carson City. I wrote their trail plan. I was the lead for the trail plan. I was a charter member of the Carson River Group, at no cost wrote the Carson River Plan that is actually wonderful to see because all the things that are in that plan that has, has happened almost to save and protect that river. If you have some history here, you know how poor Kate Bennett just got beat up there for a while, but we gathered that committee and put a nice collab together. And my experience was parks and writing plans. I helped them put together the plan for the Carson River. So I have pretty vast knowledge plus a history of working for state parks for 25 years and running Tahoe State Park, which is your neighbor, it joins and, which a lot of people in this community use. And there's 14,000 acres of open space that I helped manage. So I have a pretty broad base knowledge that I think I could bring to the board and be an asset to them, but never taking on the role that I think there's some ownership on my part because of that experience that I do have, so.
Thank you so much. Supervisor Giomi.
Mark, thanks. Good to see you.
Hi, Stacy.
Carson City ordinance allows a developer to build a residential common open space development that provides for the reduction in lot sizes, actually below zoning minimums. In exchange for that, they need to provide open space and recreational space. So I'd like to know how you feel about that ordinance? If you think we should allow to, or continue to allow this, this exchange under that development process or should the lot sizes meet the minimum required under the zoning ordinance?
Well, part of my history is I've got over 20 years on committees and I was 12 years on the planning commission. And I was there when they brought that forward and I was all over that. That's absolutely wonderful to cluster housing and bring it together and give open space for that community. I think it's, should be required for all these communities and I was a strong advocate for that because you had a place for your kids to play safe and the neighborhood to have a place to be and have open space and out of your housing. And cluster housing gives you a higher density and that's what we're supposed to look for on the planet right now rather than, which was, I was guilty of living on a five acre lot out on the Carson River while I was doing that. So I couldn't walk to talk, but I was certainly an advocate and a strong voice for that on the planning commission to make sure that, that these groups had that opportunity and that you would actually try to convince them that that was the best thing to bring forward in front of us as a plan so that you had this open space. That's critical to just the health of the community is this open space for how you manage it and take care of it and the opportunity to use some of it and then you can actually do the resource protection that way and actually bring wildlife in that way. And there's all these things that come as a benefit to that. So I was a strong voice for that and always will be, actually. And I don't live on five acres anymore.
Thank you.
Supervisor White.
Good morning, Marks. Good to see you again.
Nice, congratulations to you, sir.
Thank you. So describe for us the efforts you will take to provide equitable access for all user groups.
You know, that's something that, having that state park background, we worked on diligently, that's so... to, so everybody has access to their parks. And it usually comes down to money a lot of times, but with the new laws that have been passed, you, you have to make a very concerted effort to give whole access to people. And then I've actually looked at different ways that access works with different mobility, and there's a group here in Gardenville that's actually internationally famous for, and I keep, I forgot the name of the, poor guy, that has mobility. Thanks for folks that have limitations for moving in their legs and stuff. So you try to design for that within the best reasonable way you can do it without it being a limitation for financing. You know, you don't want your whole project just to have access for 100 feet of trail or something. So you plant it in and do the best you can in the hope that the topography fits you well or whatever it takes for that access. And then if you're talking about different user groups and stuff, that's where open space plays a huge role because you're bringing open space into the city. And when I was involved with the trail plan, the mantra was a little bit about every house is a, every garage is a trailhead so that everybody could have access to the open space in the community. So there's that access type, and then there's the access for people with physical disabilities that you do the best you can with the money that you have and that you actually design areas, the Rim Trail put a space up at Tahoe Meadows that the Telephone Pioneers built that was just for whole access for people. If you've ever been up there, right at the top, you can, there's a little loop trail that's designed for whole access, it's called. So if that's the access you meant or the access of the whole community. So both of those, I've been involved with those programs and a strong supporter because that's kind of, if you're going to be a park ranger in your life, you're trying to gather, give that access.
Well, my question really was about all of the user groups across the entire community.
Yeah, and that's what, every garage is a trailhead. So what you try and hope is, when you develop the trail plan and the open space plan was developed, then the UPMC was developed, it was to look at the future so that any new subdivision that came in, you looked at opportunities to make sure that they're building trail systems that allowed people to get access in and out to the schools, to the stores in a safe way. And then RTC works on that too with, so there's this, it's recreational trails and there's transportation trails. So what you hope, transportation has all the money usually, much more than recreational side does. So you always try to work your plans so transportation can help support this, but the rec support it too when they have the finances like this community has since they passed their tax so that everybody has access to all the open space and not only the open space, your shopping, your schools, the boys and girls club and all those things like that. Does that help better there, Morse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Jones?
Good morning, Mark.
Morning.
My question to you is, I think everybody recognizes that Carson City has some of the best trails in the country. Do you have any suggestions or ideas how we can enhance the amenities of our existing trails?
Could you, could you say that last part? I heard you dropped out. I couldn't.
How, how we can enhance the amenities in our existing parks and trails?
Well, this community is rare and an exception, and one of the reasons I love living here is that they voted themselves a tax for open space and trails and to do that. And I don't, I don't think Jen's here, but she's probably very happy and pleased the fact that most communities don't have this. They have a budget to improve those situations. And then that's where the Parks and Rec Board and the Open Space Board comes in and gets involved to make sure that there's some, a lot of thought put into where those monies go. And then that allows, like most other communities, don't have the finances to do that. As an example, the waterfall trail that actually I was involved with and helped put in and design, they just got an RTC grant, which I said transportation has all the money. They just got an RTC grant. They got a FLAP grant from the forest, which forest lands, which are huge amounts of money. So now they're going to improve the trail, put a restroom up there, make parking reasonable. And they're very good at, Carson City at chasing those things. And then Jen's really good at getting Southern Nevada Public Land SNPLA, I'm going to say because I can't remember what all the other words are, SNPLA money for, enhance this. And Carson City has done a great job under Jen of getting a lot of extra money from SNPLA, from RTP grants, from the, using the tax that the community has, which you can use as a match, which is a really big deal because it's hard to get the grants without the match. And they're not, they're not putting pressure on the, on government, you guys saying, okay, we need 20 grand, where can we get it? Who's, you know, who are we going to lose, whose jobs are going to get lost so we can get this trail? You don't have to do that because of the tax helps the match. So I, I agree with you. We have one of the best trail systems around that's, haven't been heavily involved with that. It's a, for a community, you can drive out of almost any house in Carson City and be on a trail in five minutes. That's something to speak to. So I think everything's aligned in this community, so I don't know when it sunsets, the tax. I hope it's not soon. It doesn't sunset.
It doesn't.
Laurie's shaking hell. That's just wondering. You would know being on the parking record. So, that's huge. And I've been involved with a lot of other communities. I've helped on plans in Truckee Meadows and up at the lake. And that's a big deal to have this tax base to support it because then it really has a voice from the community, says, we want open space, we want trails, we want these things. And then we've had a very good support from the Board of Supervisors on the transportation side too, to make sure the trails are a component of all this. And I miss Merrick Crowell, who was huge, gave speeches that every year I'm responsible for a trail conference of all the trail people in the eastern front that I kind of helped take the lead to help put together. And he gave our last, last time he gave a speech, it was all about trails. So that was from the leadership of you guys talking about trails and telling the world we're doing a great job and sharing that story, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough, for applying and for all your service on our boards and commissions over the years. We're going to go ahead and interview now the last candidate, and then we'll be making our decision, so you're welcome to stay.
Well, I'd love to see the finish here.
There you go. We're getting there, so we're waiting on Ms. Martinovich.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And if you'd state your name for the record? It was already green, it needs to be green.
Susan Martinovich.
Well, Susan, I don't think you've interviewed with us before for any positions?
I have not.
So just a little bit about the process. We'll just go through a series of questions, the same questions that we asked all the other candidates. Since you are the last one we're interviewing for this positions, we'll then make our decision. And you're welcome to stay for the decision part.
Terrific, thank you.
Okay, so, excuse me, I'll start with why you're interested in the position. What is, what is it about the position that excites you? And then what benefit do you think you'll bring to the committee?
I'm interested in the position through my career. I really haven't had time to contribute, and I'm at a place now where I want to give back to the community. I'm from Carson, born in Carson, and I think that I can provide information and, and help and help the community grow. I think that you all, previous administrations have done such a wonderful job in putting us in a good place, Carson City, and I just want to be able to continue that. Open space provided an opportunity for me in that it's just, it's outdoors. Being outdoors brings community, brings health, brings a lot of benefits. I think I can bring the knowledge of my past experience as well as information from my connections across the country, that we shouldn't be reinventing the wheel and maybe if there's some ideas that we can glean and from others, let's use those to the benefit of improving and building on the good items that we have.
Thank you. Supervisor Giomi?
Thank you, thank you, Susan, for applying. Good to see you. Carson City Ordinance allows a developer to build a residential common open space development that provides for a reduction in lot sizes so they can actually build something smaller than the underlying zoning allows. In exchange for that, they have to provide open space or recreational space. So I'd like to know how you feel about that ordinance? Do you think we should continue to allow this exchange? Or should we require that development meet the minimum lot size in the underlying zoning?
I think that continuing the way it is, because there's benefit for both parties, and that's, and that's what, what it seems to be. Property is important, and people's property rights are important. If there's a way that they can benefit by possibly building smaller and that the city benefits by the benefit of public lands, there's a win-win in that regard. So we have to be respective of the property owners, and then also though it's to their benefit to be respective of the, allowing for the open space because it's community and it helps everyone at the end of the day.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor White?
Thank you. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning.
Thank you for applying for this position. Describe for us the efforts you will take to provide equitable access for all user
That's a, that's a great word is equitable access. And I think it's, to me, it's this huge benefit that the nation and there's more focus on equitable access. I think that educating folks is reaching out, letting people know what's available, public, getting public input, providing information on, on opportunities, and do it in more non-traditional ways. You know, social media's great, newspapers are great, you know, virtual's great, but there's also opportunity to physically go out and maybe talk to people and get their input and see really what they need. Because what does equitable access mean? It means different things to different people. And so what are the needs that, that people really need? And so it's a, it's a matter of listening and then being able to accommodate if we can.
Supervisor Jones?
Good morning, Susan. I think everyone agrees that our open space trails are among the best in the country. However, could you expand or give your thoughts on how we could improve the amenities of the trails? Any improvements or suggestions?
I think they are awesome. I mean, I've, I've had the opportunity to travel across, you know, I've been to every state, and when I'm there, I get out and try to use their, their trails and their facilities because I'm a runner or a slow, slow and labored. But I like, I think that one of the big things that I appreciate is connectivity and making it easy. I was just in Las Vegas over the weekend and used the 215 Beltway Trail on my bike, and it would go to the intersections, and one thing I noticed is that I didn't know where to go when I got to the intersections. And, and you know, you figure it out, but I think signs, signs and striping and information to let people know how to connect to the different trails is, is one of the benefits. The trails on Riverview Park, just seeing the signs is, was very helpful, and I think maps are, are good. So also the maintaining them, but keeping people off and guiding where they should go or not go, sometimes blocking areas when people start to make their own way, that helps maintain the system as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for interviewing today, and I wish all the candidates good luck. We're going to move on now to the difficult part, which is making the decision on which of the best three we can bring forward.
Thank you. And just in disclosure, I know that Supervisor Shute mentioned also that my son does work for Carson City as well, so just wanted to mention that.
Thank you so much again for this. So we'll bring it back up here now for some tough decisions to make. What a wonderful group of candidates we had, each and every one of you. Thank you. Who would like to start? Do you want to, I'm not seeing a, who's got to jump out there and start this? Supervisor Giomi looks like he's ready, he's getting his glasses on.
Yeah, no, he's not, he's not ready.
Oh, he's not ready?
No, I mean, I can be ready. I just, you know, we've said this before, I mean, I, we are so lucky in this community to have such quality individuals that apply. You know, I wish we could put you all on. I know we've said that 100 times. But this, you know, for me, this open space committee is one of the most important because of the commitment that this community has made to open space and the importance to our quality of life. And so I take this very seriously. We have three appointments. On the surface, my three out the door would be Mark, Susan, and Donna. So I'll throw that out.
Okay. Mr. White?
I'm pretty close to what Stacy had to say there. For me, I would favor Mark and Susan, and beyond that, I'm, I'm pretty well open.
Okay. These are the tough, tough stuff here.
Everybody did a good, good job in responding. I think I would go with Mark, Susan, and Donna.
Okay, thank you. Well, it looks like we actually have agreement here for Mark, Susan, we all agree, and then Donna, I'll put out on the record as a reappointment. So if there is someone that would like to raise their hand to make a motion, we'll move on.
Yeah, I'll do it. Move to appoint Donna Inversen, Mark Kimbrough, and Susan Martinovich, each for a term that expires in January of 2025 to the Carson City Open Space Advisory Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Giomi and a second by Supervisor White, with a close one right behind him by Supervisor Jones. I'm using the iPad, you guys. So I'll, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? The motion carried unanimously. Once again, let me thank each and every one of you for applying. I think the, Mr. Erickson was online and said he had to go to work, but Carson City is so very fortunate, and I, in my mind, think that we haven't heard the last of the ones that were not selected. We have lots of boards and commissions, and we've been known to actually reach out and ask you to apply for positions. So please don't be discouraged. You can come back or we'll help you come back. So again, thank you all very much. And with that, we're going to just take a 10-minute recess so that we can get started on the next board set, which is for RAC. But we'll be in recess till 10:10. Thank you. Thank you.
Mic four, mic four, testing, mic four, testing. Mic two, mic two, testing, mic two, testing. Mic one, mic one, testing, mic one, testing. I can sit down. Let's get a little power. Two, two. Is it not?
Tamar, is the recording good to go?
Yes.
I know a more important video.
Oh, sorry. Yes, Madam Mayor, it is. I forgot my mic.
We're going to get used to these mics. And then I'm going to call the boardizers back into session. We're on item 13C, which is appointment considerations for RAC. One position for the business operator or property owner and two positions for citizens at large. First up, we have Mary Kay Wagner. Good morning. Would you state your, push the button till it and release it, it'll turn the microphone green. The button's on the base there.
My name's...
Great. Nope, just leave it on. You're great.
My name is Mary Kay Wagner. I take my mask off.
You may. Okay, thank you so much for coming today to interview with us for the position on RAC. We just really want to thank you in advance for that. Have you been through any interview processes before?
Yes.
Okay, so you've done this before. And then we'll just jump right in. So tell me, if you could dream, anything that you wanted, money was not the object, what project would you do to help with the redevelopment of Carson City?
Oh, boy, there's a lot of things. I think, you know, perhaps I'd think of more social gatherings surrounding music and community and recreational opportunities, bicycling, for to name a few, you know, outdoor events. I know Ascent Physical Therapy does a lot of, they they put on a series, winter, a winter run series they put on. So once a month for five months through the winter seasons, they hold a event for people who would like to get out and run or walk. So that, those are well-attended events. You know, the Nevada Day Parade is a, they always have a fun sponsored event, so that's, that brings out a lot of people before the parade, you know, which is a big social gathering for the city. I've participated in it many times. Epic Rides does a big event. So events like that. Also, you know, with music, music brings a lot of people out, different genres of music to get people out and enjoy connecting together. I know we're in COVID, but we won't always be.
Yeah, from your lips, right? Make that real. And can you also tell me what you think you would bring to the committee? Why, why you? Why should we pick you?
Well, I had a career with the state of Nevada, working in environmental protection. I did a lot of outreach and education with communities in the Carson watershed. But I I was with the state, so I also worked in Las Vegas and in other rural areas throughout the state. Within Carson City, a lot of times over the 22 years that I worked with the state of Nevada, you know, I put in, I put on water festivals with middle schools particularly. So, you know, we did it on an annual basis with, you know, student leaders and then peer educators, other professionals from other agencies would, you know, I'd get them together. We'd have different events and educational stations that students would rotate through. So, you know, we'd have about 400 or so students through a day at Fuji Park or at Mills Park. And, you know, working on watershed education, environmental education, non-point source pollution. I also coordinated the Carson River Snapshot Day for, you know, a number of years, 20 years or so. So we'd get students out to different points up and down the watershed, taking water quality samples of the river at that snapshot in time. So it was environmental education, but it was also just connecting with multi-generations too, getting people out there. And it was just a, a big thrill for a lot of people. So that's my background. Prior to that, I worked for the U.S. Geological Survey here with the Water Resources Divis- Division in Carson City. That's kind of my expertise and what I've done. You know, I also connect with community. I like community. I do a show with the community radio station. I don't know if you all know, we have a community radio station, KNVC 95.1 FM.
Okay, well, great. Thank you. Supervisor Giomi?
I'd like to thank you for taking my question. But I did come up with another one on the fly. So thank you, Mary, for applying. Appreciate it. I'd like to know what criteria you will use to evaluate projects that come before you to spend the limited funding that we have in the redevelopment authority on.
Yep. I think time is a resource, how much time and energy is being put into a project as well as financial resources. You know, I'm also a small business owner, so I I do, you know, help manage a small business. And, you know, it's always a matter of time and, you know, personal time, staff time, what is involved in making a project successful, as well as the resources that you have to put toward it. And, you know, what kind of, what kind of benefit are you going to receive back from it? How are you going to measure that? How are you going to measure your success on your project? Do you have any measurements for success?
Okay.
Things to look at.
Supervisor White?
Thank you. Thank you, Mary, for being willing to serve our community. Where do you draw the line between free market capitalism and government subsidy interference?
Well, I think if you're going to get government subsidy interference, you're going to have to apply for a lot of that government subsidy interference. So if you don't apply for it, you may not get interfered with it. And if you don't apply for it, well, then, you know, free capital, if you've got your own free capital, then you don't need to apply for the government subsidy. So I I think it's just a, it's a partnership and it's a mix. And how much of a mix are you willing to compromise with or give up for government subsidy? If I'm getting you right on that, you know? I mean, there's always got to be a little bit of give and take on things. I guess that's all I can say about that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Jones?
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Redevelopment funds is used for many, many things. Facility improvements, downtown improvements, seed money for special operating organizations and that. Do you think this money should be a one-time use for a business or should they be able to reapply? What is your thoughts on that?
Oh, I I think they should be able to reapply. I mean, a lot of times... Oh, I think they should be able to reapply. I mean, a lot of times people, businesses don't know about opportunities that are available. You know, you've got to get the word out. Being a member of the chamber is helpful. Networking is good. But if people aren't applying for limited funds that might be available, then those that know about them should be able to reapply. And, you know, reapply, fine. If you're deemed not eligible or if others haven't received it in the past and they're applying now and their criteria that are being met, you know, there's a lot of things and factors that go into play when decision-making comes in. But, you know, getting enough people in the basket to look at...
Well, say there are limited funds and you have applied and received money in the past, and I've applied and I haven't. Should you be considered before me if everything else is equal or should we...
Yeah, I don't think you... I don't think you should be considered before me. I think we should all be considered together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe those that have applied and received it in the past may not be at the front of the list, you know, ahead of those that haven't received it in the past. Different criteria and I think look at them all equally.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shudee?
It worked. Hi, thank you so much for applying. Okay, what do you see are ways to help community members get more involved in the decision-making process of redevelopment and the grant funding or the funding as well? Or at least to better understand the process? Where I'm coming with this is sometimes there's been a project where citizens at large don't quite understand the reasoning behind it. And so, what are some ways that you could help people better understand what's happening?
Oh, that's a tough one. You know, that's a tough one because, you know, we've just gone through that, you know, with the insurrection, you know, on Capitol Hill and trying to get people to understand and clarity. And it's difficult because, you know, people only hear what they want to hear and they have their own biases. But, you know, I think a better way is to try to provide people and provide avenues where information, you know, is truthful information is put out to the public and made available for them through trustworthy avenues, which may be the small businesses up and down Main Street that are talking to their patrons and customers and, you know, those citizens that want to be involved and who have a voice or want to have a voice. So, you're just trying to get, you know, factual truthful information out to people in a fashion that they can receive it. And if that's by, you know, an attractive bulletin that you can post, you know, like, you know, I was noticing on your bulletin board out here, you know, it's like, oh, I was... It drew my attention because of the color in it and it was organized well. And it's like, oh, is there any information here that I can use that I might want to put out on my program on the radio station? Just a little blip, you know, just a little blip, you know, like, hey, let's all wear a mask. Let's wash our hands. Let's maintain social distance, you know, keep ourselves safe. And that's not trying to impose any bias on anybody. It's just trying to put out a factual information. So, you know, I think utilizing small business owners up and down Main Street and the wine walks and putting out attractive information, you know, swag, you know, swag is stuff we all get. And, you know, I just recently went out and purchased, you know, 1,000 little 1.7-ounce containers of hand sanitizer with my logo on it. And so, you know, I can give that to, you know, people. I went out and I... It's like, okay, I'm your... I'm my avatar patron. So, I was like, you know, I really want a new jar gripper. So, I went out and bought 1,000 jar grippers with my logo on it. And they look nice. And I can give those to all the people that I want to refer other people to me. And every time you're using a jar gripper, you've got it right there. So, that's just an example. That's stuff we all get. But trying to put factual information out, you know, editorials, do people read the newspaper? Or do they go on to carsonnow.org? You know, where are they getting... Where's that, you know? And you... I'm sure you've got people that tell you where people get their information from.
Right. Thank you. Well, Ms. Wagner, thank you so much for applying today. And we'll be making a decision when we have completed the interviews of everyone. And I understand you have another appointment to get to, so staff will let you know the outcome of today.
Okay.
Again, thank you so very much.
It's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
You know, good luck.
Tough decisions, I know.
Very well. Yes. Okay. God bless America.
Thanks.
I am a veteran myself, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
I'm a patriot.
Thank you.
All right. Take care.
Ms. Paulson, can you tell me who is next?
We're trying to get ahold of court and Gina is on her way down, so I don't know if we want to...
Go ahead and skip then to Ms... I saw Ms. Fant is out there and so is Maxine Neets. So, you want to bring in it? Holly? Andy. I know she goes by Andy, just in case you're all wondering. I was like, Holly? In between the people. Thank you, Matt.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor.
Would you state your name for the record, please?
Sure. Holly Ann Fant, but I prefer to be called Andy.
Great. So, Andy, is this the first time you've applied for a board seat with the city?
Yes, ma'am.
So, just a little bit of background, so you're aware of the process. Each of us in turn will ask you a question. Then at the completion, you're entitled to feel free to stay and listen to the others or you can leave, but we will make a decision at the end of this agenda item today.
Great.
For the pick. So, with that, I'll just get started. So, my... I have a two-part question is why should we select Andy for this position? And then, maybe the more fun one, is if you could dream and money was not an object, what project do you think redevelopment should embark on?
Thank you, Mayor. Why me? I've actually undertaken my own redevelopment project here in Carson City. I see some familiar smiles and faces. I spent a lot of time in this room. If you didn't know, I own the Curry House. And so, this is where we are today. After about a million dollars of renovation.
Sorry about that.
Yeah. And this is what the house looked like in 1910. So, I had to go through the Historic Commission to be able to get the permits to take down the trees that were impinging upon the foundation because we were starting to lose the house. And then, this is how the house looked a year ago, but I said, my goodness, it looks like a cemetery, like a mausoleum. And now here we are with the porch restored. So, I feel like I've actually done my own redevelopment project for the city. I would love for Carson to become a tourist Mecca. I would love for people to recognize that Carson is the state capital, not Vegas, not Reno. And I think somebody said to me, oh, it's Winnemucca. It's like, well, you are really off. But to establish ourselves as a place where people want to come and want to hear the history. And it kills me that, you know, our high school kids come on the walks and they don't even know who Abe Curry is. So, it would be like, how do we elevate ourselves to, you know, capital of the state, great state of Nevada, and infuse that pride into the upcoming generations?
So, you're going to do it. I can see her enthusiasm. Who's next? Supervisor Giomi?
All right. Thank you. And thank you for the work you are doing and that you will continue to do, I know, for, I'm sure, years to come. So, Andy, tell me, you know, there are limited funds in the redevelopment district. And one of the jobs of the RAC is to make recommendations to the Redevelopment Authority how to spend those funds. What criteria will you use to evaluate projects that come before you?
Conflict of interest is a big one, right? I'd like to see businesses get in and sponsor. I'd like to see school organizations, you know, high school clubs, scouting organizations sponsoring with no strings attached. I mean, you've got to be really, really careful that there isn't vested interest, which is why I haven't applied until basically I said, look, my work is done on the house and there's no conflict of interest with me coming forward. So, me is making sure that no strings attached, no conflict of interest. People who have good hearts and really want to do the best for the city. I'm a Californian and I don't ever say that ever, ever again, native-born. I'm a Nevada now and I'm so proud to be here. And I want everybody else to appreciate what we've got here. It's such a special place.
Thank you.
You bet. Mr. White?
Morning, Andy.
Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Good to see you again, Maurice.
Good to see you. Thank you for applying for this position. And I really want to say thank you for being so open and accommodating to the community with the project you're doing there on the Curry House. It's amazing that people like you are so open with your private, personal areas. I appreciate that. I don't think I could do that.
It's the pride, Maurice. You know, I... Lori knows. I love my house. I really, really do and I want to share that.
That's an awesome thing. Thank you. So, where do you draw the line between free-market capitalism and government subsidy interference?
Oh, boy, you ask a hard one. I'm ruled by a spirit within me that says what's right and what's wrong. And I raise my kids that way. I operate in business that way. It's personal ethics. And so, if it looks squirrely, I'm not going to allow it. I'm just not going to stand for it. Personal gain, personal motives just can't be part of this. It needs to be for the people, by the people, for the benefit of all of our citizens, businesses and visitors here in Carson.
Mr. Jones?
Good morning, Andy.
Hi, darling. How are you?
I'm good. We've alluded to the fact that there are limited funds for redevelopment. And it's used for a myriad of different things. What are your thoughts? Should the funds be spent for reoccurring events or functions? Or should it be a one-time you-spent utilization of the fund? Or I'd say, if I'm an applicant?
I think you have to spend equally. You're going to have foundational programs that require continual inputs and funding that are the foundation of who we are. But I think if you're going to build that foundation, you're going to have to invest in the one-time events. For example, the bike race, right? The bike race came through. We had a great number of tourists coming to town. A lot of people actually walked into the house because they thought it was one of those historic places where you could just, you know, walk in and visit. And it was my pleasure to stand on the front porch and start that enthusiasm. I was really sad to see that go away this year. So, I think it's a balance between foundation and you have in your home budget, right? You've got your foundational expenses and then you've got your discretionary expenses that may actually become part of the foundation as time goes on, especially benefits that are good for the community and good for the image that, you know, we're trying to put out there.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shudee?
Thank you so much for being here and being involved. So, my question is, what do you see are ways to help community members better understand the decision-making behind the redevelopment process?
So, you're talking about transparency? Yeah, the key word. We've got a unique mix here. We've got people that are not internet savvy. And so, there has to be, you know, outreach is that way. Full disclosure, I'm part of the Historic Society, not the Commission, but the Society. And we're struggling with that as well as how do we reach out to people to get them into the Foreman Roberts' house? So, the communication plan needs to be, pardon the words, kind of old style. You know, get together, meet, meets and picnics, and then as soon as this thing ends, we'll be able to do that. And then you've got the whole next generation that is internet-enabled. So, it needs to be newsletters and blogs and websites and recordings like this where people can join in. I'm still a fan of, you know, door-to-door flyers, you know, putting those out so that people have something to hold to say, hey, did you know? Here's the new project with some nice artwork and your tax dollars at work to make this a more beautiful place. I think it's a balance. You know, same question that Mr. Jones had asked. It's a balance.
Right.
Some of both. Thank you. You bet.
Well, I want to thank you very much, Andy, for coming today to interview.
You bet.
We have some other candidates to speak to, but we'll shortly let you know.
Okay, swell, guys. Thank you.
Thank you so... And again, thank you for that beautiful home and opening it up to the community.
Take care now.
Thank you. And what a beautiful ornament. In case everyone doesn't remember, no, the ornament is of the Abraham Curry home. So, ask Andy about the dollar on it at a later date. That was its significance this year. Ms. Neets, come on in. Let's get that ready for you. We have. It's to celebrate the new Robert Bob Kroll Boardroom. So, if you'd state your name for the record?
Can I take this off to talk? Maxine Neets.
Okay, Maxine, you've been through the processes before, so I'll just jump right in.
Go ahead.
All right. So, would you tell us why should we select Maxine? And if money was no object and you could dream, what would be a project you'd like to undertake for the redevelopment?
Okay, well, I've been involved with downtown and downtown things, Main Street and so forth, for over... Should I say how many years?
Yeah, you could skip that. Yeah, just say many.
For many, many years. And I've served this community on several boards and commissions, both going through this process with you and other ones that are not under your jurisdiction, like the college and so forth. And so, I think I have experience at doing these kinds of things. The judgments, the interplay between the committee members that you need to have when you have... When you're on a public committee. And I understand how they work and so forth. Project that I would like to see, well, I was on the library board when we tried to get the downtown library. I'm sorry to say, but we missed a nice opportunity there. That would have been a lovely facility. What I'd like to see is a little bit more attention paid to what the people want. I'm a civil engineer by education, but I'm not a big fan of the new roundabout, I'll have to tell you. Every time I try it, it's like, oh, I have to change lanes. Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh, you know? And I don't think anything was gained by that. So, I'd like to put some thought into it. I'd like to see that multifamily doesn't come too far into downtown. I was born and raised in New York and I always lived above some kind of retail space. But, you know, I think we are a town where the people don't really want that. We would like to see this town retain itself as a single-family town and not take in so many multifamily projects just because Douglas County won't take them.
Okay, thank you so very much. Supervisor Giomi?
Good morning, Stacy.
I am trying to talk, but the microphone is... I am trying to talk, but the microphone is not my friend. Good morning, Maxine. Thank you again for applying. I'll wait a second until Gina steps out. So as you know, the redevelopment authority, Citizen Committee, makes recommendations to the authority itself on how to spend funds.
Right.
And so I'm interested to know what criteria you'll use to evaluate the projects and prioritize the projects that come before you.
Well, you'd have to look at the overall project and what it is, whether it's a residential project, or commercial project, or an industrial project. Downtown has mixed zoning, so there is a lot of flexibility allowed there. I would say priorities would be how it fits with the existing surrounding areas and the surrounding several blocks. I would say also how people feel about it. I'm very conscious of the fact that, you know, if the people don't really want it, then probably we should start thinking about doing something different. So those would be two of my top criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you.
Hey, Mo.
Good morning, Maxine.
Hi.
Where do you draw the line between free-market capitalism and government subsidy interference?
The line? Well, I don't think that, you know, right now we're in a difficult situation because the government is really telling us everything about everything. You know, wear a mask, do this, do that, don't do this, don't go there, you know? But under normal circumstances, I'd like to see private investment be the upper hand, and then city or other government investment come in as maybe a helping hand rather than dominate the project.
Thank you.
Supervisor Jones.
Hey, Stan.
Good morning. Maxine, you're familiar with redevelopment. You know it's used for many things, from startup to seed money for organizations to city projects, to improvement of facilities. What is your thoughts on reoccurring applying for the money? In other words, you get it for one year, should you get it in pursuing years, or should the money be spread around more? What is your thoughts on that?
Well, as a former event producer who is hoping every year for money from various agencies to help those events get off the ground, in those days, I would say, yes, we would like it. Once you got it, you got it pretty much forever. But I understand that, you know, change happens, and new things come, and things go away. You know, things like the rendezvous, they were here for over 20 years, and then, boom, it was gone. So I think that there has to be a balance between that. New events, new organizations may need some help in the first few years, but maybe not, and to let them know right up front that this is not gonna be ongoing forever. We need to look at other things that come along, new things that will come along maybe next year that aren't asking us for money this year.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shudy.
Hi, Lisa.
Hello, hello. Thank you for applying. What do you see are ways to help community members better understand the decision-making process behind the redevelopment projects?
Well, you know, we have all kinds of internet media available to us, social media, and perhaps there could be a series of seminars so that people could just sit in their homes and watch and have the whole process explained at a very basic level. And then maybe for those who want to get further into it to be at a higher level, interviews with members of the committee or members of the authority also, with the newspaper or with Carson Now. I think there are ways to inform the public and to let them know why this is happening and what it's all about, what it means, what it stands for, and what good it's gonna do.
Thank you. Thank you so very much, Maxine, for coming in today and interviewing and all of your community care. You do, you care, and I just want you to know, on behalf of us, we all recognize that and appreciate it. It's important.
Well, I appreciate being here, and I appreciate your questions, and from what I could see out in the hallway, you have a good group to choose from.
We do. Thank you so very much. And so, Ms. Paulson, we're ready for the... I think I saw Gina pop in. Good morning, and would you state your name for the record, please?
Lopez.
So Gina, you've been through the process before, so we can go ahead and jump right in?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I think Gina was filling for those that were not before, an unexpired term. So this would technically be a reappointment for her, but I think you've only done one meeting?
I've only done one meeting, yes.
Okay, so she's still kind of a newbie out there, so these questions will still apply. So tell me, the why Gina? You know, why Gina? And then the fun part of the question is, if money was not an object and you could dream, what would you work on in redevelopment?
Oh, wow. And I wanted to ask for a little bit of forgiveness this morning. I did not get the email about this meeting at all. So it just came from a run. I'm not prepared at all. So why Gina? Because I am very involved with a lot of different aspects of this community, whether through the arts, whether through culture, whether through academics. You know, I'm a parent. I've been a student here. I've got a special-needs child, so I'm very involved with that aspect of it. And obviously, I'm very involved with the arts. We serve 15 different organizations at the Brewery Arts Center, and some of them are civically-minded, like Sierra Nevada Forums, and some of them are definitely arts-based. So it seemed natural to want to be a part of the redevelopment district, being in the redevelopment district with my work and working in it quite a bit. And money, no object, well, you know, I'd like to see what's happening at the Orsby House.
That was honest. I did say money's not an object.
Money's not an object. Okay, yeah. That would be, again, somebody bought it, so this is just, you know, dreaming. But my Big Pipe dream for the last five years, and I haven't made it subtle or quiet, is to turn that space into artist's loft, because something like bringing in artists to an area will completely redevelop the entire creative sector and business sector and bring new life into the downtown core.
Thank you. Supervisor Giomi.
Gina, thanks. Thanks for running in here. As you know, on the RAC, you'll be making recommendations to the redevelopment authority on how funds are spent. So I'm curious to know what your criteria will be that you'll use to evaluate those myriad of projects.
I'm still learning how the whole process works, but I'm a matrix person, a rubrics person, and there are certainly criteria as to what kind of return on investment are we gonna get from putting our funds into certain projects and certain events? You know, I think that is definitely a criteria that always needs to be looked at, and things shouldn't be grandfathered in if they're not getting that return on investment, whether through actual funding, funds, return on investment, money back into the community, and also for equality of life, is it good for the community? There's lots of questions that should be asked all the time in order to continue that funding, and whether we should say, "Hey, we should back off," or maybe we should put a little bit more into this.
So ROI isn't always evaluated on money. It may be evaluated on benefit to the community.
Yeah, I think I said that, and yeah, I think both factors need to...
I was just confirming that. I wasn't arguing with you.
Both factors need to be evaluated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor White.
Thank you. Good morning, Gina.
Hi.
How you doing?
Good.
Great. Where do you draw the line between free-market capitalism and government subsidy interference?
Well, I think those lines are very clear individually. You know, you can't just draw, you can't just make a conclusion on a wide variety of things. I think they have to be looked at individually. I think that, honestly, there should be more look at the free market and capitalism and see what can actually be done to help them get to the next level, so they don't need or require any subsidies. I think some things could be done and have been done in other communities, like, you know, an ease-back on permits to allow them to succeed with a sliding scale, so that there's not money spent out for subsidies.
Supervisor Jones.
Good morning, Gina.
Good morning.
I'm a big fan of Gina's. I think you've done an amazing job at the brewery and all of your summer concerts and all that. It's been amazing, and I congratulate you on that.
Thank you.
Redevelopment, as we alluded to earlier, has limited funds. It's used for a variety of things, seed money for organizations, starting a new benefit, to facility maintenance, whatever. And we get, I know oftentimes people reapply annually for money. What are your thoughts? Should the money be spent one time? Should it be spread around equally, or should... How do you feel about obligating the money?
Well, I feel like if something is not sustainable within five years, it's not a good project. So it could be a sliding scale, like pulling back every year, or, you know, maybe just reevaluation after every year, again. Things should sustain themselves. Just taking from my own experience with the Brewery Arts Center, we applied for money from the Cultural Commission, and we applied for two years' worth of funding from Levitt, and then after that, we didn't need it anymore for Levitt because it was self-sustaining. And that's how we approach everything, because if it's not gonna work after that, it's just not gonna work.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shudy.
Hello, nice to see you. What do you see are ways to help community members better understand the decision-making behind the redevelopment process?
Community members. I think that more emphasis could be made to make these meetings. I know they're available online, but frankly, they're really hard to get to. I can't find them when I'm looking, and I'm really looking. I think that the whole process is done right here in this room, you know, and making that accessible, more accessible, and having those things available and put out all the time as opposed to having a reporter here giving, you know, trying to be unbiased about what happened in this room, you know? And I think more people who actually see what happens and hear about the process may want to become involved, may see themselves as part of the solution instead of a complainer, and they will become more involved and will understand why certain decisions are made.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Lopez. It'll take me a little while. I got it right? For coming today to interview with us. And just to kind of put a little bit on the record for the new board members, I think what may have happened is often we do not require reappointments to come to the meeting for interview processes, and a lot of times those even go on consent agendas. So I'm sorry, Ms. Lopez, that potentially you didn't get a notice, and I'm gonna guess that happened with Mr. Cardinal also. Assumed he was a reappointment. But this is such a brand-new board. I think just inadvertently, I really wanted the whole board to be able to meet everyone and have an experience and a decision. So don't worry about freezing in or running in, literally. It's all okay. And we certainly won't discount Mr. Cardinal either, because I think he was functioning under a different assumption. So it's back up here now, and Supervisor Giomi, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I just, I had a, I mean, are we, we have one more candidate? Or did the other two candidates pull up?
Oh, I'm sorry. You must not have heard. Mr. Pernice and Mr. Hoffling withdrew.
I knew Hoffling withdrew. I did not hear on the record that Mr. Pernice withdrew.
Yeah, Mr. Pernice withdrew also.
Typically, when we have reappointments along with other candidates, we do have them show up. So I'm wondering if Mr. Cardinal got notified, or do we know that ahead of time? Or...
He...
He was not notified to be here?
We tried to get ahold of him this morning, right?
On the fly, that he was not notified ahead of time. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so does anyone want to... We kind of went through this last process. Does it... I don't see a hand raised yet. Does anybody want to go first on what their recommendations are? Mr. White has his hand raised, and then Mr. Jones. Mr. White?
Well, I think for myself...
Not with...
He got the hand raised.
I think for myself, in regards to Court Cardinal, you know, with him not getting noticed to be here, I think I would be inclined to go ahead and ask for his reappointment and as well as Ms. Lopez, and then Ms. Fant.
Mr. Jones.
I agree with that.
Mr. Giomi.
I guess I just don't know that it's fair to Ms. Wagner or to Mr. Cardinal to not have invited him and to make a decision without him being here. So I have to think on that a bit. On the remaining, I think Ms. Lopez should be reappointed because we barely gave her a chance to breathe. And again, we, you know, between Ms. Neets and Ms. Fant, both quality candidates, I can agree to Andy's appointment.
Ms. Shudy, do you want to comment?
Yes, please. You know, I actually, ditto what Supervisor Giomi just said. I would really love to be able to hear Court's answers, Mr. Cardinal's responses, just in fairness to Ms. Wagner. That said, I also understand that he has done a nice job and that... So I am truly comfortable with what's decided on that. Regarding the two appointments, ooh, I hate it when this is tough, and this is... But Gina, you know, I just so appreciate what you said, and I agree that you should be reappointed, and so absolutely. And then I concur with Andy's appointment.
Thank you. Ms. Paulson.
I just wanted to clear something up for the record. So Mr. Cardinal was notified of the meeting. He thought that he had sent a message back that he would be out of town, but we didn't receive that message, so I just wanted to clear that up.
Thank you. So I'm kind of left with a dilemma. So historically, unless a member that is a current appointee, we reappoint them unless they... We have some criteria that we look at. They don't show up, they don't participate, they don't fulfill the duties of their position. They don't show up, they don't participate, they don't fulfill the duties of their position. And otherwise, we reappoint them. So I'm kind of left with a dilemma there. But historically, we do a reappointment and I'm very comfortable with Mr. Cardinal's service. He is one of our largest employers in that, in the redevelopment. So I think he brings a perspective that's needed on that committee. So I'm comfortable with Mr. Cardinal. Agree with all of you on Ms. Lopez and Ms. Fant. So this, what Supervisor Giomi, do you like to do?
I would, I would just counter that we just didn't appoint someone.
I said historically.
Okay, I just wanted to, you know, because I, I don't know that it's, it's always automatic and, and, you know, I, I mean, I think it's vital that they try and show up. And having said that, I agree that, that maybe there was some misunderstanding there. So I, I will allow a motion to be made and see where that goes.
Mr. White, would you like to make the motion?
Thank you, I would. I move to appoint Court Cardinal to the redevelopment Area 2 position for a term expiring in January 2025. I move to appoint Gina Lopez and Andy Fant to the Citizen at Large positions, each for a term expiring in January 2025.
Is there a second? You could just speak it if you don't want to hit the, we'll catch up to the hand raising.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm struggling just again, the, you know what, I, I will second it though and I, I second it.
So I have a motion and a second to appoint Court Cardinal to the redevelopment Area 2, Gina Lopez and Andy Fant to the Citizen at Large. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor vote, say aye. Aye? Any opposed, say no. The motion carried unanimously. And I will ask staff to confirm either by email or phone in the future so that we have an actual answer whether they're coming. So I, I agree with everyone that we really need to understand the process. And I really want to make sure of something else, that when the applications are put in, that they know what date the meeting is going to be so they can make arrangements to do an online WebEx appearance if necessary. But that they're aware of that in advance, that they need to attend to be considered. So, or at least call in. All right, thank you all very much and thank you, Ms. Lopez. We look to forward to your great dream. Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on and I'm watching the clock somewhere close to noon or whatever. We will recess for lunch. You notice that the agenda doesn't have a lunch recess because we're going to try and let the agendas flow and get as much work done as we can. But we will break somewhere around that area for lunch. So we're on agenda item number 13D, which is Discussion and Presentation on Western Nevada Development District. Was he going to do it online?
Yes, we actually have Cheryl Gonzalez on the WebEx and she's going to do a presentation.
Good morning, Sheri, welcome.
Cheryl.
Gonzalez. I know her. Okay, go ahead Cheryl.
Ms. Cheryl Gonzalez, I'm with Western Nevada Development. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. My name is Cheryl Gonzalez. I'm the Executive Director with Western Nevada Development District. And annually, I like to come to all of our member agencies and provide a presentation on W N D D, which is the acronym, and answer any questions you might have on the projects that we're working on right now. So I, I know that there are several new supervisors elected to the board. So I'm looking forward to this presentation to give you some awareness and understanding of what we do. And again, answer any questions you might have. So Western Nevada Development District is the only economic development district in the state of Nevada. And we are certified through the U.S. Department of Commerce's, U.S., I'm sorry, U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration. There's about 500 across the nation. Currently, the state of Nevada, primarily out of the Governor's Office of Economic Development, are working to establish additional development districts throughout the state and with the purpose of being able to access federal funds and bring them back to our communities. W N D D has been in existence for about 37 years. And we're a multi-jurisdictional agency. We're comprised of seven counties and five cities. And we have 16 associate members that represent nonprofits, education, business, and transportation. Our board is comprised of elected and appointed officials. And we're looking forward to our new appointment for Carson City to participate with the board as well. Our funding is primarily through an EDA planning grant. We also have an EDA CARES Act, which I'll be speaking about later in this presentation. And we also have an EPA Brownfields Grant. We're also funded through membership dues. Again, the board is comprised of elected and appointed officials. We also have economic development staff. And then there are businesses that have been identified by all of our member counties and cities to also participate. So as a member, an agency member of W N D D, you are able to appoint up to three people to serve on the board. It includes an elected official, typically staff, and then a business representative. That business voice is really important to weigh in on the issues that your community is facing relative to economic development. Our mission is, we are a council of local governments, business, education, and nonprofits. And we're partnering to respond to opportunities that will grow the region's capacity and promote, promote environments within which business can be recruited, retained, and expanded with jobs within the communities we serve. This is accomplished through regional planning, grant, and financial acquisition and collaboration. One of our cornerstone programs or projects is our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, which is known in an acronym as the SEDS. We just rewrote the SEDS and we're getting ready to update it. I would encourage you all to visit our website and look at the SEDS. It provides you a very good overview of our, our region relative to the economic environment as well as your own specific community. We work with UNR and the Center for Economic Development and UNR Cooperative Extension to create the SEDS. And we also, of course, work with the Economic Development Administration. In order to retain our status as a district, we are required to have the SEDS. Because you are a member of W N D D, a development district, and also have projects that are in the SEDS, it leverages your ability and makes any projects that you're applying for, for federal funding more competitive. It also helps with private foundations as well as public-private partnerships to show that you're a part of a regional plan. So some of the services that we provide, again, I talked to you about the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, the SEDS. And again, we're getting ready to update, update the SEDS with new projects and/or revised projects to be included. We also help with grant research, application, management, and administrative assistance. We do community studies, assessments, and planning. We have a business microloan fund program. And currently, we're working on a very comprehensive, region-wide economic recovery and resiliency plan for which we received an EDA grant. And this plan will be interfacing with the state's Plan and Road to Recovery. So the Economic Recovery Resiliency Project has come about as a result of the economic shock that are, that we're all experiencing globally as well as throughout the states and our region. The purpose of this Economic Recovery and Resiliency Plan is that it will include short, mid, and long-term activities that respond to the economic shock sustained as a result of COVID-19. Again, we're interfacing this project with the Nevada State Plan Road to Recovery. We want to make sure that our efforts are seamless and we want to achieve the most robust outcomes that we can for our region. The solutions will be multidisciplinary and they will cross-promote important information programs and results. We will respond to current pandemic, the current pandemic economic shock. But we'll also create activities that will help us be more resilient in the future with any other kind of economic events or climate events. So we will be looking at what would happen if there was a fire? What if there was a flood? What if there was an earthquake? And all of our strategies that we develop in this program will be thoughtful in considering those kinds of events as well, so we're more resilient. We have planned to, the plan is to build back for economic impact and will facilitate the collaboration and data collection that would be critical to response, relief, and recovery, understanding the economic concerns of the region's communities. So we have 14 economic recovery and resiliency teams. And each of these teams are comprised of members that are from the respective team's sector or business. And we also have a core team that has designed and is stewarding the plan. I'll tell you who our council reps are very quickly. Ron Bath is overseeing our housing team. He's with Salmon Point Development. Carol Chaplin is overseeing tourism and hospitality team. She's with Lake Tahoe and Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority. Jeremy Gilpin, he's overseeing our finance team. He's the President of Commercial Lending with Greater Nevada Credit Union. Andrew Haskin is overseeing economic development team and he's with N N D A, of which Carson City is a member. Carsten Heiss is overseeing the manufacturing team and he's with the Governor's Office of Economic Development. This next individual, I, we refer to him as Boz Kaye because we always butcher his last name. So we always refer to him as Boz Kaye. And he's overseeing information and technology and he's with his own company, which is called Balanced Agency. I'm working with all of our government members on the government team. Lucia Maloney from Carson City is overseeing infrastructure, transportation, and utilities. Kitty McKay is with Carson Tahoe Health and she's overseeing the health and wellness team. Dana Ryan is overseeing education and workforce. She's with Truckee Meadows Community College. Dawn Vetter is overseeing state, federal, and natural resources. And Dawn is one of our economic recovery coordinators with W N D D. And then finally, we have Erin West, who's overseeing building and trace and he's with Nevada Builders Alliance. And those teams have been meeting and we plan to have our project done in about six months. And we hope to keep you apprised of that project as it proceeds. We do an economic recovery report as well and we distribute that every other month. So hopefully you guys are getting that. Regional accomplishments, these are some of the, the projects that we have been involved with or, or are currently involved with. We worked with CDBG and we established a revolving fund program. We have, we were able to acquire $185,000. We are working with Persian County and the city of Lovelock with their Brownfields Coalition Assessment Grant. That was a 600,000, three-year grant, right in the middle of that grant. We worked with Join, I'm sure many of you are familiar with Join. And we worked with them with their Career Bound Workforce Development Program. And we're able to receive a grant for $75,000 from the state. And then we recently received the EDA CARES Act money, which was $400,000 over a period of two years to complete this recovery and resiliency project. Some of the projects that we have submitted, applications where we assisted our member agencies to submit a grant application include the Tahoe Prosperity Center. And we worked with them in developing and submitting a grant to EPA for workforce training. That was a $200,000 grant. Tahoe Prosperity Center, we also worked with them in supporting a grant for EDA recovery and resiliency, similar to what we're doing in our region. But they wanted to focus specifically on the Tahoe Basin because it strides two states. And so EDA agreed that they needed to submit a separate application. And I understand they did receive that award. I'm not sure of the amount right now. The city of Reno, we supported their efforts in the Reno Sparks Reclamation Project for $5 million to EDA. We hope to hear in a day or two on that award. Washoe County submitted an Entertai project for their reclamation facilities. That was a $3.5 million project. And we just found out unfortunately yesterday that they did not receive that grant, but they have been encouraged to resubmit as it was just not as competitive as the other grants that had been submitted at the same time. So getting back to the SEDS, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, the benefits for our members is they are participating in a regional plan to leverage resources through networking and capitalize on our region's resources. It builds capacity with grant opportunities and partnership and it increases the likelihood of success for economic vitality. You become more resilient given economic challenges, planning for those challenges, which we're very much involved in this one project right now. And SEDS can be utilized as a part of a grant application or development of partnerships, collaborative programs, and services. Our priorities in our SEDS are workforce development, infrastructure, which includes sewer water, energy, broadband, transportation, quality of life, and housing. So if you go to our SEDS, you'll see that we have those four or those five goal areas as our priorities. And we have strategies and activities under those goals to successfully realize them as a region. So it's important to know that if you're making a grant application into EDA, their investment priorities are recovery and resilience, critical infrastructure, workforce development and manufacturing, exports and FDI, and opportunity zones. We have some very specific project evaluation criteria that we like our member agencies to be aware of. These will go on our SEDS forms this year. And it, we use these criteria to prioritize the projects and then work with our member agencies to support them in submitting a grant. So those, the evaluated criteria is what is the project program broad regional impact? So for example, the Reno Sparks Water Reclamation Facility, sorry for that pause. That is a broad regional impact for getting that project completed. So it was, it was elevated to a high priority. And how many issues, priorities, or goals identified with the SEDS does the project meet? And how does it foster collaboration and partnerships? What is its potential to bring in new business or expand existing businesses? What is the potential to bring in or expand the number of jobs, including the quality of jobs? So EDA is looking for jobs that are sustainable and are wage, wage resilient. In other words, they're, they're at least $15 and more paying jobs if you will. And how does it contribute to the economic resiliency for the, for the community and the region? And that concludes my presentation. It's just a really, I know it's a lot of information, but it really is a short, brief overview of the organization, what we do. Our board is currently comprised of 45 board members. And the success of the board is based on the input and participation of our board. And they are a very active board, I'm happy to say. So that benefits their communities as well as the region. So do you have any questions?
So Cheryl, thank you so very much for the presentation. Your previous slide that went through some criteria, that's really germane to everything we were talking about this morning with some of our boards and commissions. And I used to serve on this particular board and I really like your evaluation criteria. And that that's been added and looks like you guys have come a long way. And I hope that Mr. White will enjoy working in this board. Mr. White will enjoy working in this board. It's really a much broader opportunity to look at projects regionally. So, thank you for your presentation, and does any members of the board have any questions for Ms. Gonzalez? I don't see any, Cheryl, so I want to thank you so very much for your presentation, and thank you for the report, and please continue to forward those to us when they're completed. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mayor. Thank you so much, everyone.
Okay. So, we're going to move on to agenda item number fourteen A, which is under the sheriff's jurisdiction here, for possible action regarding a grant from the Department of Justice dealing with our MOST team. Sheriff?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
You're welcome. It's a friendly day.
This, I appreciate Ms. Paulson allowing this to be pulled off of the consent agenda and put on to the regular agenda, especially for those new board members that are not really wholly familiar with some of the operations that the sheriff's office does. Specifically today, we're talking about our Mobile Outreach Safety Team, our MOST concept, and how it's progressing for you. For the record, my name is Sheriff Furlong. I have with me Deputy Don Gibson and Ms. Becca Bach, who run our MOST team. This is a possible action item to discuss regarding a grant from the Department of Justice to 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program in the amount of $70,000 to be funded, to fund a behavioral health peace officer position for the sheriff's office. This grant provides funds in an effort to prevent and reduce crime and to improve the criminal justice system within Nevada and Carson City. The behavioral health peace officer position fills the gaps and supplements current programs, including Mobile Outreach Safety Team, our FAST program in the Detention Center, Forensic Assessment Services Triage Team. The award will continue to partially fund one deputy position to enhance community conversations, which is primarily why we're here today. It's an ongoing objective of this program, is to invite community participation in these conversations and training, and to serve as first responders to critical calls for service. The overarching goal of the Carson City Behavioral Health Peace Officers Position is at the core, the basis of public safety, to save lives and improve individuals' quality of life. This must be performed through objective and measurable results. This program addresses these problems through two strategies: diverting appropriate individuals from arrest and emergency rooms, and reducing incarceration time for those who have been arrested. These goals will be achieved through collaborative partnerships with non-law enforcement and governmental agencies, of which this team here can elaborate further into. The courts and nonprofit organizations, strengthening the resolve and the partnership with the Mobile Outreach Safety Team, instructing deputies and regional partners in behavioral health best practices, and collaborating with members of the Forensic Assessment Services Triage Team, the FAST program in the jail, which is also supplemented by our APRN services in the detention center. As the grant has no match, it greatly reduces the financial impact to the city. Prior years' grant awards were $95,000 and $56,000 towards salaries. Those are approximations. You have the further information. $36,000 towards benefits, and $1,500 for transportation and travel, excuse me, training. Current grant award is in the amount of $70,000. This is the third year that we have requested this grant supplement. The first year that it has been reduced down to a 75% level, which I thoroughly, as the sheriff, enjoy. I enjoy grants that get programs up and running, in other words, seed opportunities, and then gradually wean us off of those grant funding sites. The, excuse me, if approved, an augmentation will be needed, as in the budget that will be prepared for the grant application and awarded, as a larger portion of the program will need to be funded by general fund transfers. It is important to understand that with the changing rules, this last year has really thrown us upside down, COVID, much of the social agendas that are being addressed. This grant has moved from its regular federal cycle of October into January, so the grant that we are talking about right now is for our finance offices and our fiscal folks. Pretty much a nightmare, and so I think I apologized last year for it, but here we go again, because they've adjusted it again. I would like to address one thing that Ms. Bagwell and I had had a discussion about. Many times, we look at the quality of life in Carson City, and we don't always see the fullest of pictures. These programs that the sheriff's office runs, programs and opportunities, are very, very unique to the quality of life here in Carson. Each year, we do perform an analysis of what we do here in Carson, and again, this year for the year 2020, in the top ten things that the sheriff's office does, there are no crimes in those issues. And in fact, one of the ones that we have held most near and dear to us is that top one, and that top call for service, again this year, is welfare checks. People asking us to check on their friends, their relatives, or someone else that they are concerned about, including their neighbors. Last year, the MOST program entered into that top ten calls for service. This year, it has moved up by two notches. So, the program is growing in public understanding, public referral, and access to these two right next to me, as well as our agencies working with us and making referrals straight in. It is very important. It is very important that we have a quality of life, and that we understand that jails and emergency rooms are not always the answer to address those quality issues. 2020 is a challenging year for me to reflect on. This board will get some information from us as we produce our year-end report, which we're just about ready to do. A lot of things happened. Jail populations went way down this year, so when we reflect on the data for this year versus 2019, sometimes it can be very, very difficult. But it is important to understand that, set aside these two that are sitting next to me, our MOST team, the sheriff's office responded to 661 other MOST circumstances. This team alone received over 1,000 referrals straight into their offices, and the challenge is huge. When we talk about the future of this type of response from police agencies, in other words, assistance that is not police officer-directed, it's important to note that these folks have only been able to reach about 43% of those referrals that are made directly into their offices. Most type responses are time-consuming and very, very challenging. As I said, they are now in the top six calls for service that the sheriff's office responds to. They work directly with our FAST program, our forensic assessment program led by Doc Joe in the jail. They have daily contact with him. In fact, this office sits just feet away from his, I guess you could call it desk, if you want to call it that. And they, Deputy Gibson is, has a small group of folks within the sheriff's office that are also equally capable of stepping in and assisting Becca in the event that Don is tied up or doing other things, such as he's entitled to. We do measure our health crisis calls for service by three tiers. Obviously, you know, something would be very high, a suicidal type of a call would be in that top tier, tier one. From 2019 to 2020, not surprising, we saw crisis going up in Carson City. Those lower-level calls, tier level two and tier level three, we saw reductions in both of those, and that's a significant accomplishment for these officers. As it stands for mental health, from keeping Stacy in mind and your background, fires, mental health transports.
Yeah, his mental health issues.
Mental health transports affecting the fire department are on an increase. They have been steadily increasing over the years. So, this is a problem that, not a problem, this is a challenge that's not going to go away, and it needs to be a public health issue that we continuously address. So, with that, I will turn it over to Deputy Gibson and Ms. Becca, and surely entertain any questions that you folks have about the program.
Thank you, members of the board, and Mayor, and congratulations to those that are newly elected. I know most of you, or at least seen most of you in some form or fashion. Those of you that don't know me, I'm Don Gibson, and I've been with the sheriff's office for 23 years, 20 years full-time, so I just hit my 20-year mark, and I am the current Behavioral Health Peace Officer, which Sheriff Furlong indicated on the grant that we received. And we are going into year three of our grant. My partner to my left here is Becca Bach. She's a licensed clinical mental health social worker, and together, we respond to any and all crisis in the community, with a primary focus through that grant on the jail diversion aspect. So, what that means is we try to find folks in the community that might be looking at an arrest, and if we're currently working, we'll work with our partners in the field to say, hey, rather than taking this individual to jail, why don't you let the MOST team take it from here? And oftentimes, they don't say no to me, so they always allow us to do that. We've been known to actually go into the jail with deputies arrest folks and take that individual out of jail and get them into treatment. You know, you have a lot of folks in the community that commit the discretionary-type crimes in the community, and oftentimes, the reason they're committing these crimes is because they might have a mental illness or a substance abuse issue or something of that nature going on. And so, that's really where our team comes into play. So, rather than jail, we take them over to, out of the Mallory Crisis Center. Carson City also has two CCBHCs, which is a lower level of care, and if it's very, very acute and a very combative person, of course, that's where we take them to the ER. I think for the success of this unit, the MOST team, the MOST concept, North Counties are running about five teams. Lyon County's running a team, Douglas County's running a team, and we're obviously running a team here as well. I think it's important to note from a national stance that this is the hot-button issue. It really has been for maybe a decade in law enforcement, where, you know, you kind of integrate police and social workers kind of in the same fashion, so it's really starting to take off now. And I think for Carson City, we've been well ahead of the game. Sheriff Furlong brought Becca over in 2014. Becca's a state employee, so that's a salary that we don't have to pay for, and it's a really good collaboration with the state. In addition to that, back to the success of this team, it's not just the two people sitting right here and the sheriff over here. This really is a village. It is a community partnership with, you name the service provider in the community, and Becca and I have a relationship with that service provider. Where in the past, especially from a law enforcement stance and kind of a community stance, especially in the medical industry, there's always the HIPAA and, you know, all those other guidelines and whatnot, but what we've seen is when you break down the silos, those communication silos, that is really the reason for this concept's success in developing relationships with directors of those facilities, where in pastimes, they'd say no, or we didn't have room. Well, when MOST calls, they're moving mountains to make sure that they're able to accommodate us. And we've got two assertive community treatment teams that are ran out of Carstow Hospital right now. We have two assertive community treatment teams that are starting at a community counseling center and one out of Vitality Unlimited, and once those get up and running, Becca and I will be making referrals to those folks as well. We like to call it kind of spreading the wealth as far as what we do, because we don't want to overburden any particular one entity. I'll share a couple of our stats with this, because we keep internal stats as well that might be a little bit different than what the sheriff actually has, because some of the stats that he has, other patrol deputies are responsible for handling some of those calls as well. So, our calls for service from year one to year two went up 154%. Our consumer contacts, so a consumer contact is anytime Becca and I either have personal contact with an individual on the street, or we have phone contact with an individual, and we saw a 52% increase in that from year one to year two. We record voluntary admits. This is where Becca and I are able to convince somebody that's not of acute status or acute crisis, where we can get them to voluntarily go in and seek treatment. That was up 44%. Our legal 2000s, this is really acute, folks that are danger to themselves or others, or in a lot of cases too, we see the elderly population where they're failing to thrive. So, this is where legal 2000s would come into place. That was up 34%. Our diversion over to the Mallory Crisis Center from the ER, which is important, especially from a taxpayer stance, that was up 83%. So, we've been able to divert people from the ER to lower level of care over to the Mallory Crisis Center. And this one is kind of especially important to Becca and I, because when we first started this team full-time, we struggled. We got NAMI, National Alliance of Mental Illness, is a third-party entity that does community surveys for us, and we received a survey back, and this is a good opportunity for us as well, because there's members in the community that may be watching this hearing at home to really know who we are and really when maybe to call us or call our team. But one of those surveys came back, and it said that the MOST team was Carson City's best-kept secret. And Becca and I are like, oh my gosh, we don't want to be a secret. So, some of you have seen us in different civic group presentations, whatnot, and so we really tried to get who we were and what we did out to the community, and when you look at our community referrals, I think we were successful, you know? It went up 238% from year one to year two. The sheriff did indicate that we carry a personal or duty phone. We answered 1,051 calls on that phone last year. And granted, we don't work, we work 28, 28 hours a year in a work year, but we're also tasked with training other law enforcement agencies. Becca and I run a CIT Academy, which is now going to two times a year, and that's 40 hours per class, and we train law enforcement from surrounding jurisdictions, in addition to community service providers, whether it be from fish, nurses at the hospital, you name the provider, we invite them into that CIT, which is Crisis Intervention Team Training. So, those community referrals, very important to us, up 238%. I think it also speaks to the community, whether it's doctors' offices, or name the provider, that they have faith and confidence in the MOST team. Since COVID, what we're seeing as well is a large increase, all these state agencies, they're calling MOST. We just had one yesterday where CPS fell through for us, and then we had to handle it. We had one on Thursday where EPS fell through for apartment managers, and they told those folks, call the MOST team. That ended up in a legal hold on the female that we helped in that particular case. So, the community really is relying on the MOST team to be able to handle, again, you name the crisis, and we're there. Becca and I's kind of personal policy is the buck stops with us. If the community has a crisis or an issue or a problem, and it reaches our desk, we're going to handle it. Our jail contacts, we're required to make contacts to the jail. That was up 109% last year. Our sheriff's office referrals, I really love this category, and I think it speaks to Sheriff Furlong's commitment and department's commitment as a whole regarding the training that we give to our individual deputies, because when they're out there handling calls, they're recognizing, it could be a property injury report, but the deputy shows up and they make contact with an individual, reporting party in the case, and that reporting party just isn't really acting or acting right, or deputies recognize additional needs in that picture house, those referrals were coming to our team. So, that sheriff's office referrals went from 391 in year one to 800 in year two. So, that really speaks to the knowledge of the deputies on the street, recognizing that there's issues going on. That's 104%. See, our jail diversion, another one that's very important to us, because we keep folks out of jail, that was up 130% in year two. And then, we just record referrals together, whether it's community referrals and internal office referrals, was up 121%. I'll let Becca speak a little bit maybe about from the state aspect, and then if you guys have questions, we'll answer any questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Bach.
Just for the record, Becca Bach, I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I'm from the Division of Public Behavioral Health Rural Clinics. I've been there, I've been an employee for 24 years, and like Don said, I've been working in a collaboration with the sheriff's office since 2014. What this grant has done really for our team is phenomenal, because I used to ride with seven different deputies, and we were handling beat calls and doing MOST. So, what that meant is we could have an accident, and we're on the accident, because it's on our beat, but then a suicidal subject comes on, and we can't respond to it. So, with the grant, it allows us the opportunity just to respond to behavioral health calls, which is all day long, and just Donald summed everything up. I just wanted to add that we're talking about quality of life issues, so those 1,056 calls were all from people, family members that struggle to navigate the very complex behavioral health system, and they're in crisis. So, when people are in crisis, they call 911, and our deputies are very trained, because we do the CIT Academy every year. But this unit is specially trained, so we have those collaborations with other organizations, so our main objective is is really to increase a person's quality of life. So, they're not having to call nine-one-one. They're not having to go to the ER. They're not having to go to psychiatric facilities inpatient. They can have lower-level care and just have joy in their life instead of just misery, which is where we are coming in with. People are just absolutely miserable.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Giomi, I see you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. I, you know, I, I mean, it sounds like from what, from what all of you have said, you, you know, you could use five of your teams here.
We could use a lot more, for sure.
So, maybe five isn't the right number. But, you know, I, I don't, I don't know that we as a city can fund five, right? So, I guess what I'm saying is that, and I'm sure Kenny will bring requests forward. But I, I'm kind of curious how we can, do you guys work on triaging stuff? So, in other words, you obviously can't handle every call. And not every call requires an LCSW and a deputy, right? So, I mean, it seems to me the critical component, CIT sounds like it's a key step in that. But I think maybe a, a bigger key, and maybe you're doing this, is just finding ways to triage those things so that you're handling the worst and really finding ways to get those other people the help they need. To your point, Becca, because it is, it's complicated for people to navigate the, the regular health needs in today's environment, let alone behavioral health needs when they're in crisis. So, I, I just hope we can find a way to, to, to triage so that we can, and, and it sounds like you're doing it. But, but what, does what I'm saying make sense? We just, we need to find a way to spread that wealth because we're not going to be able to afford
For sure.
Five or ten teams like you. And we're probably not going to find, no offense to you, Don, but LCSWs are not a dime a dozen. You know, and good deputies aren't either. But I think there's more of you than there are of her. So...
No, without a doubt. It's funny you bring that up because when we first went full-time with this, Becca and I set out with the hopes, or at least the drive to make sure we addressed every referral. We quickly found out that that was, it's, it's impossible. So, very early on, within probably two, three weeks, we realized, yes, we have to have a triage process. And we do have a triage process. So, we'll put, you know, for, just to give you an example, you know, if we get referrals where people were, they had suicidal ideation, they go immediately to the top. So, we're making phone calls to providers, looking at discharge, when they're being discharged, making contact with family members, just to make sure safety plans are in place, make sure the person's connected in the community. If we get referrals, you know, suicidal ideations from different counties, but they end up in Carson City, oftentimes they do because we have the, the Regional Crisis Center. So, we'll make referrals back over to our counterparts in Lyon, Douglas, Reno, wherever it may be. So, yes, we are doing that. And it's, and I'm glad you brought it up because we have forty-three percent of referrals being completed. It's not to say that every referral needs our presence, but very good.
And I, I would just like to add, and then I'll, I'll close. You know, the work that you do not only impacts the, the patients you help and the citizens that you help, but it lessens the burden on our taxpayers because it puts people in the right place.
For sure.
It puts them in the right place instead of putting them in the wrong place. Putting someone in jail who doesn't deserve to be in jail cost us money. And it costs that person quite often their life. So, I, I'm very supportive of the program and whatever we need to do to, to continue to make it work going forward, that, that isn't a blank check, Sheriff Furlong. But, but...
Yeah. He heard, he heard what he wanted to hear.
Thank you both for your dedication and willingness to do this. It's impressive. Thank you.
Supervisor White, you have a question?
Thank you. I want to thank your group for what you do in this regard. I think it's a really important part of the infrastructure that our community needs to have. And kind of tagging on to what Supervisor Giomi said there, you know, we, we heard a lot of numbers just now. I quickly added those up. And the answer I came up with is needs more help. I would ask this board and staff to diligently find ways to finance some more help into this program. And with that, keeping in mind, I think we need to figure out a way to do some cross-pollination over to the juvenile side as well. I, I see that becoming something that is going to be very important, working with those folks over at juvenile. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Shute, you have a question?
I, I really want to thank you for what you're doing. And I know that sometimes your clients, they are in a pattern of going from emergency to emergency. And that whole tunneling and having difficulty finding different ways to manage a problem. So, yeah, I think what you're doing is incredible because it really does lessen the burden on other agencies, lessens the burden on taxpayers. But it increases their skill set and it gives them tools to live their lives in a, a sustainable way. So, they're not, no longer going from crisis to crisis. So, kudos. And I, I couldn't support this more.
A final comment for you, Ms. Mayor. And I apologize if I ever screw that part up.
You're good.
In response to some questions that you've had in the past, the sheriff's office does keep a high-utilizer list of persons. Last year's jail population, we, we obviously were far reduced from, from years past. Out of the close to two thousand people booked into the jail, only two MOST patients were in that high-utilizer category. That's a phenomenal success. And it goes to exactly what each member here has said. Jails are not the place for crisis. Jails don't do anything for crisis. There are some that do end up there. And I, and I point out that from a briefing that I had from these folks, they've only had to do one arrest this year. The only one. They have removed four from the jail to better services. This is a phenomenal program. It's a phenomenal community. I love the fact that we don't have crime in our top ten things to do, but that we have the neighborly and the family things to do.
Thank you so much, Sheriff. I want to say that I've had the fortune in different roles that I've played over the last few years. But the most exciting part for me of this program is the community connections. It is amazing how it isn't just a high-utilizer at the sheriff's office. It's also at Fish. It's also at Ron Wood. It's also at the hospital. And I find the value in this program so much for the person in need, the family in need. I think sometimes we forget that piece of this, is the family struggles and is in a different type of crises, but they're in one too because they want to take care of their loved one, but they don't know where to turn. So, I think for me, seeing the community connections, working with you through the hospital high-utilizers and some of that, I, I just think it's, again, a program that Carson City should be proud of, that we are the forward thinkers in this matter. And I'm just absolutely thrilled to see your good work. And would you just like double those stats for next year, please? Just thought I'd put a little pressure out there for you.
If this COVID stuff continues, I think we're definitely going to see it. But just, if I can highlight real quick, and you brought up one of the most important points, and that's one of mine and Becca's passions as well, is mental illness or crisis can affect any family. It doesn't matter what walk of life you come from. In fact, a lot of us in here might have relatives that have a mental illness. So, it is, it's, it's, it's a family and then sometimes generational issues as well. So, if we can get in there and boost the quality of their life up, that's, you know, the goal of this team. So, thank you.
So, again, thank you guys so very much. This item does require a motion. And Mr. White, did you want to do the honor?
Thank you. Yes, I am honored to make this motion. I move to authorize acceptance of this grant to continue partially funding one behavioral health peace officer position.
I have a motion in a second to approve the grant and continue. Mr. Don Gibson?
Thank you.
Anyway, is there any further discussion? See none? Everybody say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any noes? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you again for all of your good work. Thank you. We're going to do the last item here before lunch, which is item fifteen A. That is discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of three members to the Carson City Board of Equalization, each to fill a four-year term ending in January two thousand and twenty-five. I'm going to actually do a small start to this one. It's a little bit different appointment than what we went through this morning because this requires me to actually nominate. So, I'll place the nomination. And then we will carry on with Ms. Adams, I believe is on the line. So, as mayor, I would like to nominate Jed Block, James Wells, and Pamela Leonard Ray to serve on the Carson City Board of Equalization. And I'm designating Jed Block as the chair. So, with that, Ms. Adams, is there anything else you need to add to this item?
No, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you guys hear me? Okay, yay. No, you did all my job for me. Thank you so much. I would like to say, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and new members of the board. I look forward to working with each of you in the upcoming years and just appreciate your service to our wonderful community. And I'm here for any questions, if anyone has any.
Any questions? I don't see any. Would somebody like to make the motion? Supervisor
No, I did the nomination. So, now you guys can approve it.
I move to appoint Jed Block, James Wells, and Pamela Leonard Ray to the Carson City Board of Equalization, each to a term expiring January twenty-five, and to designate Jed Block as chair.
Is there a second?
I second that.
I have a motion by Supervisor White and a second by Supervisor Shute. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, sorry. I need two more votes. Okay. Any opposed? Nope. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. We really appreciate it. With that, we are going to recess for lunch and come back at one o'clock. Thank you all.